Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing, 508-548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
Good morning. I'm going to call to order the Town of Falmouth Select Board meeting for Saturday, November 22nd, 2025. It is now 9:06 a.m. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Enture, you want to start us off, please?
I will, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Again, welcome to our second strategic planning session. We're happy to have back David from the Collins Center and Phil. And I apologize, Phil, I can't remember your last name.
I'm Nios.
Thank you very much. As you all recall, I think I sent out an email, we're going to do this one a little bit differently because we have six remaining strategic priority focus areas. We're going to split into two separate groups. Peter's going to be assigned as Assistant Town Manager to participate in one of the groups. I'm going to float a bit, participate in some of the discussions. We thought that that was the best way in four hours to get through the six remaining priority areas. So that's our goal today. We're going to start out, we're going to flip the agenda a little bit, if you all don't mind. I've asked David to lead us off with kind of a review of the survey, or Phil is going to do this, review of the survey that was sent out to department heads and board and committee chairs.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, Phil has put together the presentation on the surveys on the left-hand side.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to address your group, and I applaud the Select Board and Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, for bringing together a strategic planning effort. You may or may not realize that it's not a common thing in Massachusetts. It's actually very, not very unusual, but it's not common among cities and towns. And to pull together this kind of an effort and to devote the amount of time that you're devoted to it is really something that you should feel very proud of, and it does set Falmouth apart from a lot of communities. So, my name is Phil Lemnios. I'm an associate at the Collins Center, but, and what that really means is I work with them on a project-by-project basis. I'm a retired town manager. I worked in Massachusetts, three different communities for over 30 years in that function. So I have kind of a good understanding of the mechanics of local government here in Massachusetts and how departments interact with each other and so forth. Doesn't make me an expert on any one of those departments, you know, I couldn't be a fire chief, I couldn't be a police chief, but I can be a town manager and was a town manager. So I kind of understand the pain and the happiness these guys go through, and I also understand, you know, the Select Board, the role of a Select Board member, and many times it's a thankless role. So again, something that you should feel, you should feel proud of the work that you do. You're helping to shape your community. The survey was, to me, was a very interesting survey in that, you know, by and large, I think you have good buy-in on the strategic planning process. And I'm referring to this document, so we're not working off a PowerPoint, we're working off a paper. And if you kind of go to the first page, you could see that the majority of respondents are staff. So 75% of the respondents were staff, 25% are board and committee members, so folks that you may appoint or folks that may be elected separately, elected officials. And I think that's good because it really gives you a sense of what the folks who are going to have to kind of do the day-to-day implementation and be involved in the grind of a strategic plan, how they feel about the various elements of the plan. So I think that you captured, you know, a good group of folks, you can draw some conclusions from the survey, and it will give you a sense directionally of how the strategic planning effort is kind of rolling out and unfolding. If you go to the second page, and you see what we did on this document, the blue commentary are the department heads and the darker bars are the elected officials. So it also gives you a sense within each one of those responses, you know, where the, where people are leaning. So the second page is kind of a general question, "Strategic plan aligns well," the question or the comment they were asked to respond to, "Strategic plan aligns well with the goals of my department or committee." And if you look at this, you know, close to 60% of the folks who responded agree with that or strongly agree.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
To you, Mike. Do we know generally how the department heads handled this? Did they just look at this themselves? Did they, you know, bring in other staff? I mean, do we have any idea of how they went about responding?
Responding to this survey?
Yes.
It's my understanding that it was by themselves because it was sent out via email.
So they didn't bring in any, you know, any other staff in the department?
Correct, correct. This is a glimpse, well, that the perspective of the department heads that responded.
Okay, thank you.
And kind of continuing along that theme, again, I think you should view the survey as a directional survey, and, you know, so you could do additional follow-ups to try to get to metrics within individual departments if you so desired, or you could kind of indicate to the department heads, "We'd like you to kind of maybe give this survey to some of your key department folks to see if there's alignment with the department head and maybe the next level down or the next couple, couple levels down." But to me, this was, you know, and I think you're going to see this theme throughout the survey, that the majority of respondents are falling in the agree and strongly agree category. There are some folks that disagree or don't agree. So on this particular slide, about 17% of the folks either disagree, and then one or two folks, or one person strongly disagreed that they couldn't make the link between the plan and how it aligns with the goals of their individual department or committee. But you've got this middle group of folks, which are kind of in the neither agree nor disagree group. And that's great because that's, that's a group that you can focus on to move them to the agree or strongly agree. So you're starting out with a really strong base of folks who think the plan does have some relevancy to their departmental operations or their board and committee operations. You've got another group of folks that are eager, I think, or at least willing to kind of consider that, and they may just need more education, they may need some more attention, they may need something to move them towards the agree or strongly agree category. And the reason why I think that's an opportunity for you is because, again, when you look at the majority, the 60% or so that are in the agree and strongly agree category, your efforts have been successful at educating those folks and incenting those folks and having them recognize that, yeah, the strategic planning effort is something that has got relevancy. And that, you know, one of the adages in town government is, great, we do a lot of plans and they end up sitting on a shelf. I mean, every town manager has heard that in 351 or 52 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and by and large, that's correct. There are a lot of plans sitting on shelves in town halls. This plan is not sitting on a shelf. That's what that question is kind of pulling out, that there are people that are recognizing the legitimacy of the strategic planning effort. And that's something you can build on because strategic planning really has such a huge value to the community because it allows the policymakers, such as yourself, the management team, to not only focus on the day-to-day stuff because you can get lost in the weeds, but to kind of keep an eye on the horizon and say, okay, what are the issues that are coming down the pike that we need to kind of keep an eye on and we need to address if we want to continue to move the community forward? So when you go to the second page, you'll see that, or I'm on page three, excuse me, "The strategic plan helps me better understand the overall mission of the town." And again, the majority of folks, you've got about 60%, 58% of the folks in that are agreeing or strongly agreeing. You've got a group of 13% that disagree, but you've got 30% that are in that category of neither agree nor disagree. And so we're back into that, that spot, that category of neither agree nor disagree as you kind of go through this survey. I think that's folks that you need to kind of target and maybe try to figure out, well, what is it, what would, what would it take to move you to agree? What do we need to do to better, you know, bring you into this process? But you're still strongly in the agree and disagree column, which again is kind of validation that the effort that you're putting into this is working. It's actually resonating with people in your organization. Yeah?
I'd be interested to know more of the feedback, like you've highlighted a couple. No input was requested when plans were developed on the strongly disagree. The only one person who felt that way. But of all the people who disagree, I wonder if we should be reading some more of those comments and understand better where we might be missing the mark because there might be some stuff that we're putting out there that's just not a good idea?
I think that's a great point, and I think, again, if you, the last page has got some additional quotes, kind of different ways, that's not the totality. But I think you're absolutely correct is that this survey gives you a little bit of a roadmap of the folks you want to kind of pay some additional attention to. I mean, I think that you could spend time, you know, with the people that strongly agree, but they already strongly agree. I think that you need to kind of figure out, again, that big group, to me, the middle group is where you have the lowest hanging fruit. What will it take to move neither agree nor disagree folks into the agree and strongly agree category? And then the folks that are kind of disagree and strongly disagree, throughout the survey, there are relatively small number of people. And that doesn't mean you should ignore them, it just means that you may take a lot of effort to get them to move one or two categories, but I think your lowest hanging fruit is that middle group.
Yes, Phil, sorry, did you give us on the last page, was it that all of the responses to the open-ended questions?
I have to check with, go ahead. No, and we will provide the raw, the raw data, you know, in our report. So you'll have all of the comments because we did specifically ask that if you were strongly agree while strongly disagree, to give a reason.
Great, that'll be good. Thanks.
And I know I'm going quickly, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just was going to say, I understand that the absolute numbers are very small, but given that this is only department heads, and given that it is department heads, they're leading a much larger group, I feel like it's really important that we get to 100% because if we have an entire department, the Department of Public Works strongly disagrees may only be one. That's really problematic.
Right.
There are committee members included in, or committee chairs?
Right, no, I'm just, like, this is, this is one, this is three department heads that are in the disagree or strongly disagree, and it's only three, but that could be really problematic.
And again, a pardon for kind of rushing, but I know there's an agenda today, a schedule today, and it's a full agenda, so I want to respect everyone's time. Page four, the prompt was, "The strategic plan is relevant to my daily tasks and to the work of my department staff and board members." So this one is, is a little bit interesting is because now we're getting into the day-to-day. So how are people linking the plan to how they're thinking about operating during the day, you know? So how is that public works director kind of looking at the plan relative to what they're supposed to be doing day-to-day? How does it relate to fixing plot holes? You know, that kind of stuff. And it's a little more diffuse, right? So in this one, you have about 40% of the folks that are in the agree/disagree column, and then you've got a much larger group, which is neither agree nor disagree. And then you've got, in this category, 25% of the folks that disagree, okay?
So I just, comments, this one surprised me because Peter and I have been working for the past year and a half at least, I'm talking about the KPIs and tying that back to the strategic plan. So that, this, the responses to that surprised me, and most of them were from the department heads because that's the group and the division heads that we've been working with most closely, and, and working with them to develop key performance indicators to tie back to a little more of the, the priority areas. So, yeah, that, that was a little, so we have to work on that.
And sometimes when you look at, when you see something like this, which is kind of discordant from the other survey responses, it may be that if you sat with those department heads and said, okay, well, why did you say disagree? What are the things that you're not connecting? They actually may be connecting more to the strategic plan than they realize, and it may just be you have to tease out how, you know, what's going on in your daily activity? And do you realize that daily activity is linked to the strategic plan in this way? So they may not fully recognize that they're, they have linkages, and it may just be a conversation that you have to kind of sit with them and tease that out. And the, the conversation can serve two purposes. It can, it can demonstrate whether or not there is linkage or not, and they're just not viewing it kind of the same prism that, that you're viewing it in. And if in fact it's not linked, it does communicate to the department head that you want to link, that you want them to really beginning to think about that. So there's, there's work to be done in that area, I guess, I'll just leave it at that.
I should under, I should know the answer to this question, but was this anonymous? Do we know who responded?
It's completely anonymous.
Right, so we don't really know who to reach out to?
Correct.
To, 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 you know, dig deeper into this particular question of their, their concerns that it doesn't match up, right?
We know it's department heads, and there's a limited number of those.
But do we know the 25% of the department heads that didn't respond? And we don't even know that?
I pushed out a reminder, I just tried to, it was anonymous, and I pushed out a reminder to please respond, so, but I don't know.
Okay, I, I kind of figured that was the situation, but when we're talking about reaching out to department heads, we don't really know which ones were in which column.
Well, a positive note, Peter and I, every, every, every month, meet with the department heads, and then the larger group every quarter, including division heads. So in, in part of the agenda for those meetings, we've been talking about the nexus, the connection between what the daily activities, those key performance indicators that we, we gave that briefing on the Clearpoint Strategies platform, and the plan. So I think that's where, you know, we have to, it's, maybe it's the way the message was delivered, but we keep reinforcing that.
Refining it and refining it as well, no, that's...
This is good to know because we, yeah, there's just a little bit of a disconnect as far as the message.
I have any other? This is a, I'm sorry. Go ahead. This is a good one that, you know, "We are far too understaffed to plan for or improve on anything. Our daily tasks are merely to respond to issues and hopefully get through the day remaining operational. The strategic plan plays no part in that." So maybe there's something where we can say, maybe part of our strategic plan is to make sure we have adequate staff for what we're asking. And I know we don't really want to go there because piling on staff is expensive, but maybe that's a strategy that we have to consider. Maybe we're asking too much from some of the departments, so.
We could always say consider.
That doesn't get us anywhere.
There's a lot of consider in our strategic plan.
Trying to get rid of that, right?
In any of the, no, no worries. In any of the communities, past communities you're familiar with, or any of you guys, has, what has been the most, like, the only thing I was thinking in response to this is what if the Select Board did a meeting, like a strategic plan meeting with department heads? Is that something that's been done before in any of the communities that any of you are familiar with?
Years and years ago, a larger city I worked for did that.
Yeah.
Typically, that's left to the management team to work through.
Right.
I think, Jack, to answer the question directly, I think one of the, and it was a comment in the first page, there was no initial involvement in the goal setting, right? And the goal, that's where the rubber meets the road, so it was, right? So I think early on in the development of the plan, maybe that was a bit of an opportunity missed. So trying to get, and that's what we're trying to do now, and this Clearpoint strategies is get them more engaged with working within the plan, right? But it's a mix. Myself personally, I like to get direction, policy direction from the governing body and then take that message back.
You take that, yeah.
It's just, it's, it's cleaner that way.
Yeah, I, I think so, too.
I would love to see a department head strategy, you know, what is their preferred path forward? Like, the IT director might have, "I need to hire three people by the next year or two years. I need to implement a certain something." They probably all have their own goals and hopes and wishes, but we're not really asking what that is. I mean, maybe you are. I don't know how that goes. I know that just falls into the budget, it's their budget request, identifies their goals, but they might have some kind of concept of where they should be going, and they might not be being steered in that direction right now because we're not really asking them. If, you know, what would you do if you had your way?
Yeah, we'll be talking about, it is part of, part of the budget cycle, and I know we got to keep, get pressed forward again now, but yeah, it is part of the budget cycle. We'll be having those discussions coming up with the FYI, 2020 budget.
Yeah, I just wanted to, in response to that, if we were doing a full strategic plan, starting from scratch, right? You already have a strategic plan, we're trying to modify it. If we were starting from scratch, we would recommend very strongly that you have as a, as a early stage of the planning, the input of your department heads, right? You want, you want to first identify who your stakeholders are. Department heads certainly are a big part of your stakeholder group, and you want to get the input first so that you know going in, hey, the IT director thinks he needs another systems analyst. How does that, how does that speak to our strategy? So that would be something we would, we would want to do early on. You're kind of past that, and I think, last meeting, I kind of recommended to you that I think this is a, this is a five-year plan, you usually just revise it and add another year, right? I think it's, from what I'm seeing, it's time that you took a step back and developed a new plan, you know, a new plan and get back to that stakeholder analysis so that you can improve those numbers.
Right. A strategy for a strategy.
Yeah, can I jump in?
Sure.
If you lump together the top three lines, so neither agree nor disagree, with the disagree and strongly disagree, I think you'll see that there's balance when they look at the importance of the strategic plan, that it's valuable, that it has an overall purpose. And I think that's great because a lot of places I've worked, sometimes that, that doesn't balance between the agree and the rest, right? Where I see the disconnect is the annual budget request, the actionable goals and objectives, and I've kind of seen this a little bit just in my short time here. So, you know, when we talk about rubber meets the road, I think that translates to their actual dollars that they have to run the daily operations, right? So I'm wondering if there's a chance today to think about how we can influence actions of 2026 directly? I mean, the budget's already there, right? But how can we help guide that with some of the strategic priorities that we're...
Are you talking about this fiscal year or the...
This coming one, all the budget is done.
Fiscal '27, yeah.
And then we have 2027 that's being developed right now. So when I look at strategy, strategy should inform, if our role is to set policy, we should use this strategy to set and edit that annual fiscal policy that we just signed off on and put some words in there into what we want to achieve. So then you have the ammo, per se, to then go to the department heads when you roll out the budget and say, here's our fiscal policy, we need to aim at these things, go build your budget accordingly, plus your normal stuff, and we'll look at the pros and cons. So strategy leads into fiscal policy, leads into budget planning. So then you, you do the daily operations, plus you get that, you know, yearly change of what the strategic priority might be. So this goes back to the question that I asked at the meeting the other day, which was, we talked about what we did in 2024, right? We had a strategic aim, 2025 we had it, and then it was like, what are we aiming to do this year? We're like, we don't know. We're trying to figure out where the fiscal policy or where the money's going to be because we're all in a state of being scared because of Washington, DC. So I think when you look at these numbers, there is, again, tying it back, I think, or there's a lot of balance when, in the importance, and I think that's a huge takeaway. How it leads down and leads into the daily actions, I think, is something where we can potentially help as a team, maybe with what Jack said, maybe there's other avenues to express the importance.
Kind of to the point of the day-to-day, just, you know, Mike and Peter have this huge burden, this huge responsibility to try to make these linkages. So when you look at your staff, and I won't say, I don't know any of your staff, so that's good because I can't say anybody's name and piss them off. But when you look, look at the kind of the typical makeup of a municipal organization, you know, the staff abilities are varied, and they all come up through the system differently. So a public works director will have a different set of managerial skills, a different set of priorities and abilities than perhaps a fire chief or a police chief, as an example, because they, they move through, they get to their, they, they get to the leadership of their particular department sometimes in different ways. And so that's also one of the challenges of, one of the reasons why plans end up on shelves is not because people want to put a plan on the shelf, it's just because the crush of the day-to-day activity, the lack of resource to bring the plan into focus and actually make it meaningful, because one of the, the hardest thing for a manager to do is say, okay, we've got this new master plan gang, and it's going to say, you know, we have to have six new playgrounds, you know, by, in the next three years. Park and Rec Person is excited, very happy when they hear that. Comes to budget time, well, we're only going to fund, we can only afford half a playground. We can replace the structure at this place or that place. And they begin to lose, they begin to believe the plan is not valid. And so that's the burden on the policymakers and the electorate in general, that if you're going to actually do planning and you're actually going to try to say, we want these things, you need to give, and I, you know, you need to give your servants the resources to do that. It's not the servants' responsibility to figure out how to resource the house, okay? That's part of the, the role here. So one of the reasons why you may see department heads either say, I don't really see the linkage, or kind of overwhelmed with day-to-day stuff that I can't put some thought to that, is the resources aren't there. And that's a discussion that, you know, is too big for today, right now, but it's something that you as policymakers, you know, the last time I worked and we went through a process of goal setting, and it was kind of funny because I had a, a board member that just kept peppering goals in, and we ended, he ended up at like 97 goals. And I said facetiously at the public meeting, well, let's go for 100, what the heck? And he thought I was serious. I mean, so, you know, because it's just, you can't do 100 goals. And you, you know, so if you're going to do some of these items here, which are all great goals, objectives, strategic planning items and so forth, you really need to keep as the policymakers in mind, you have to give your staff resource. They can provide guidance as to what the necessary level of resource is, but they can't be magicians. They can't create an outcome if they don't have the tools. That's just a hard reality, and the department, and that goes down to the department head level next, as well as the employee level.
Just one minute, 30 seconds. So an example of what Phil's talking about, and I think you all know this, I talked about it Monday night, you know, so the capital improvement plan, we tie back, all of those capital requests, all $26 million, were tied back to one or more of the strategic priority areas. So we've got the staff thinking in those terms, Phil. So, and then the performance measurement piece, you know, I, I get a lot of deer in the headlights when I first launched Performance Measurement, well, you're going to use that as a hammer to, if I don't meet my goals, right? Said, no, we're going to use it as a wrench. So throughout the year, every quarter, we're going to take a look at where you're at, and if it's a resource issue, we go to the Select Board, say, look, this is your priority area, this is where we're at, we need additional resources, our staff, financial resources to meet that goal. It was, if it's a priority Select Board, this is our argument, we're not meeting it based upon the resources that we have. So I think we have gotten some buy-in.
Oh, I think it's clear you have got buy-in, absolutely.
Building that system and, and, and bringing it across the finish line.
Yeah.
No, you've absolutely are on the right track. It's just, but part of that isn't, just doesn't rest solely with the management team. There's a big component, which is why you guys are here today anyway.
Well, I think we can go just one, I'm sorry.
We talk too much as a...
Yep.
The tieback is extremely important, and I think that is a huge time commitment that you have to do to tie it back.
It's constant.
But I think we, as a board, need to help you have a plan and a good strategic plan to help you lead into instead of tie back. Right now, we're tying back and saying, give me your budgets, and they give you your budgets, and we're force-fitting them into strategic plan, whereas if we lead into, but I think that's because the strategic... that's because the strategic plan has squishy words like consider and all these other things. So it's on us. But if we can lead into each year to get to the fiscal policy, now you have ammo, you have our backup, we have a meeting, we have whatever, and it's a little bit different of a psychology about it, right?
So I just, my role as timekeeper here?
Yeah, yeah.
Seven more, seven more minutes on this.
So we got seven minutes and we got to blast through about six pages. So I'm going to limit comments. I'm just, we're just going to kind of.
I'll keep it, yeah.
Blast through. So we're on page five, which is strategic priority areas are identified in the plan, represent the most important issues that town government should address. Again, you're at about 50% agree and strongly agree. You're at half that are saying they neither agree nor disagree. So that's a huge number, and that's something that's basically saying, nah, we're not, we don't, they're not making that link between the strategic plan and their departmental activity, or they're not accepting the priorities that are established by the policymaking body and management as to, you know, how that links to their day-to-day life. And so those last two slides, the page four slide and page five slide, really is getting to kind of the heart of the matter of, are people viewing the plan as meaningful? And are they trying to incorporate the plan into their day-to-day life, day-to-day activities?
Just an editorial note on surveys. I know when I answer a survey like this and it has a, I don't agree or disagree choice, sometimes I pick that choice just because I don't have the time to really think about it, right? You know, it's like, oh, I don't know, maybe, I, let's move on, you know? And so some of those people who said neither agree or disagree, maybe if they thought about it a little bit, they, they'd come down one way or the other.
Slide six, again, speaks to, you know, what Mike and Peter have been saying, is they are doing a feedback loop. They are talking to people, they are reaching into the department heads on a regular basis, and that's what slide six is telling you. They're saying the goals are easily understood, they're able to be communicated to staff and/or committee members. So here, you've got 63% of the folks saying, yeah, we understand what the goals and objectives are. That doesn't mean we're going to do them, and we may not do them for a bunch of different reasons, that's a different question. But they clearly understand what your goals and objectives are, and there's a much smaller group that are kind of in the neither agree nor disagree group. But I think that's kind of testimony, again, to the fact that they're seeing you folks do this on a Saturday morning, believe me, department heads know you're here. They're seeing the management team meet with them and keep bringing this topic up to them in their kind of routines, routines of conversation that they're having with those folks. It has been kind of built into their communication pattern.
This is one of those ones where the number drops when you take those neither disagree or agree and strongly disagree, that number drops down to 37% versus some of the others. So it shows the importance.
Yes, exactly. So when you look at seven, specific action goals help me to develop objectives for my department or committee. So this goes to what, what select board member Reed was saying earlier. How are they linking these goals and objectives to, you know, how they develop the goals and objectives for the department? For departments, the, the single strongest statement of what they want to accomplish year in and year out is their budget request.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, and for many departments, it's really a cola request. And that shouldn't shock you. A police and fire department, their budget, my bet is fire department is about 96% of their budget is personnel. Police, about 95, 96% is personnel. They don't have a lot of latitude. If you want them to change the police budget, you have to affect the personnel, either fewer officers or more officers, because there's really not much left in the police budget after you take the personnel line item out of it. Public Works, a little more diffuse because they have materials and so forth, but when you look at kind of the three or four largest departments in a municipality, they're primarily personnel-driven budgets. And so your ability to kind of affect those departments on a year-to-year basis are really staff-driven. If you want to add new objectives that have additional outcomes, that's why you have to really look at that resource question. So, so this particular slide, slide seven, again, points to that issue of, well, how are they connecting the strategic plan to their, to their objectives? And does the strategic plan recognize, for instance, if you say, well, we want to diminish crime in downtown, and, you know, that's our objective, we want a four-point drop in shoplifting in the downtown business district here, right here in front of Town Hall? And, you know, well, how are you going to accomplish that? You know, it's not just simply a wave of the wand and you say, you know, that's going to be maybe foot patrols, that's going to be different type of policing. That's a resource question for a police chief. And it could be an over, it's going to, it might have impact on overtime, it might have impact on just general staffing, it might have impact on training, I mean, there's lots of things that are, that you, as you kind of drill into that objective, that are going to affect that department. But if you talk to a police chief, you know, and you ask them to improve a police, you know, a public safety metric, 99% of the time, a police chief or a fire chief is going to say, I can do that if you give me more people. Because there's, that's the way that job gets done. And there aren't really any other, many workarounds on that. So that's kind of what, what slide seven tells you. Slide eight, the plan helps me plan my annual budget. This is a good one, again, because you've got 55% of the folks, excuse me, 22% of the folks say yes, and then you've got a majority, 66% of the folks, that are either in that agree or disagree category. But when you start thinking about the way which most municipal budgets are developed over time, they're starting with what they have this year. And when you look again, there's four budgets, four or five budgets that consume the vast majority of the general government budget, you know, aside from health insurance and retirement, you know, all that kind of stuff. I'm talking about active operational departmental budgets. Those departments are, you know, they're, the police chief is starting from, he's assuming you're going to give me the same number of sworn officers I have this year as a starting point. You're not cutting my officers unless there's, you know, some broader directive that's being cut across the organization or whatever, as an example. So that's his base, okay? And then from there, the, the chief may say, well, if you want me to do X, Y, and Z, I need three more officers, I need whatever it may be. You know, you want more firefighter capability, you know, you want six stations as opposed to five, you can have six stations as long as you're willing to pay.
Quick, quick question regarding the, how this was distributed, are they optional or required to answer everyone? Because this one has a minus six person drop-off. Everything else has 24 respondents, this only has 18.
It's a, it's a, well, go ahead.
Committees don't usually have budgets.
Ah, there's the difference.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just comment really briefly on this slide, I'm going to suggest that when you first look at it, it looks like we have a problem. I would argue it's not a problem because sort of building on what Phil just said, we don't, you know, we don't ask the departments to necessarily grow their budget. Most of what's discretionary and could be changed would be adding staff.
Right.
And we don't generally go into the budget saying, ask for as many staff as you need. We could do that, and every department, you know, not every, but most departments would, you know, would be able to come up with the reason that they want more staff. I would suggest that it's, it's really more the role of the folks in this room, based on the strategic plan, to say, we, it's not that we need the, the police chief to have their budget guided by the strategic plan, we need to guide the budget based on the strategic, we need to guide the budget based on the strategic plan, not the department.
Don't we set the baseline at level services going forward, right? So, I mean, that's a given, so there's really not much, much more that they can add or, you know, add, or they can add, but can't subtract.
That's the difference between operations, which is 95% unchangeable, right?
All right, we're running to time, and I'm going to try to get to the last slide and a half, so, okay? So very quickly, having a strategic plan is valuable to my work and for the town overall. And again, here, you've got, you know, a supermajority saying they agree and they strongly agree, so I think people recognize there's value there. It's interesting, on the agree category, you've got kind of a big block of the boards and committees. So, you know, the board and committee members are looking for relevancy and agency into the overall process, and sometimes board and committee members, so I think that's really good that they, they do recognize, the board and committee members recognize that the planning process is valuable. But by and large, you've got great buy-in in terms of the recognition of the value of the strategic plan. And then going to the last slide, this just gives you a sense of kind of priorities as to kind of where they, where folks fall. And I know that, you know, that's kind of the overall point of what we're doing here over the, over the next month or so, is taking a look at the existing plan and tweaking it, updating it and so forth. And then you see some of the commentary, just to kind of throw it in there, that gives you a sense of it. And, you know, I'm not going to speak to any one of those categories because that's part of the process for today and for early December. All right? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have an idea who the one person who was mad the day they filled this out was?
I don't think they're mad, I just think.
No, no.
There's a disconnect between the plan and their department.
But the fact there was one person is actually good because it validates the survey.
It does, for sure.
I got a guess, but I'm not going to tell you.
Yeah.
It's all right, I'm on a piece of paper.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks, Phil. So what we're going to do now, sort of until 12:15 or so, next little while, we're going to look at the existing goals, the specific and actionable goals, to be specific, in your current plan. And you're going to do it in groups. Group, well, Group A and Group B. Group A will be in this room, Group B will be down the hall with Phil. And each time we, and we're going to do, we're going to do three rounds of this, right? And each time we do it, we're going to mix up the groups a bit, so you're not going to be with the same three people all the time to get some diversity of thought. And then at the end of that time, we'll come back and we'll all reconvene here, and the groups will present what they found to the logic. Here's what, here's what we think. So when you're going through these goals, why don't you keep in mind a couple of things? This is an opportunity to eliminate any goals, right? If there's a goal there on your list, and I'm going to give, you'll have a list in your group. If there's a goal there on your list that you don't think is relevant anymore, or you think needs to be radically changed, set it aside, right? We don't want, we, we want to focus on the goals in there that are, that you think are still valid, don't need to be changed a lot, and we want to focus on making them smarter, right? And the way we do that is by adding in milestones and a finish line. I'm going to pass out. Last time we went through. Housing. Last time we went through housing. I have the housing. You can take one pass down.
Before we break into the other room, where there's no TV coverage or anything, how are we going to manage to convey what happens there to the public? We going to make, make a voice recording or take careful notes?
You take notes and you're going to come back in here at the end and.
Talk about.
Tell people what you, what you talked about, okay? So these are the goals that I gathered from our last meeting, that you were, you thought were important about housing. And you may want to change, you may not agree with what I did here, but I did it as to show you an example of what we're ultimately trying to do. We're trying to say, here's our goal, here's who's going to be responsible. And for your purposes, right now, the town manager, right? He'll fill that in, in the future. Once the goals are all done, it will be his job to say, well, that's the police chief's responsibility, that's this committee. Then there are the key participants. Who else needs to be, who's a stakeholder, who are your stakeholders in this goal? And then milestones, and then a finish line. It's important to have a finish line. I like to look at the finish line first and say, what do I want the world to look like when we've achieved this goal? Right? Put it, and you want to make sure you put time, what's the date you're going to achieve that goal? And what, you know, what happens when you, what, at a minimum? Not, not, not necessarily, you see, the first one, I said, your Falmouth Affordable Housing Trust receives new revenue from at least one source by July 1st, 2027. All right, that's sort of a minimum threshold that you want to cross and say, okay, we've achieved that goal, right? Hopefully, it's going to be four or five contributions of new revenue or something better than that, but at least one. So this kind of gives you what, the idea of what, what we're aiming for when we do that. And you're going to get a blank one of these in your workshop for each topic, for each area, with just the goals filled in. And when Phil and I are working with you, we have this spreadsheet live on our computer, and we'll be, we'll be editing it while you talk, okay? Now, next time, that will be your opportunity to add new goals, to modify, radically modify goals. If you have a small tweak you want to make to one of these existing goals, that's fine. Go ahead.
Should use a microphone.
Okay.
Sorry. No, he's got the laptop.
I got a laptop.
Excuse me, sorry.
Dave, one quick thing.
Yep.
While we're going to be recording on our laptops, we're also going to ask one member of the group to be a scribe, so that at the end, we can collect that and compare those that we captured on our laptops.
And then each group will have to, you know, decide who's going to present the results of their group to the, to the, to the bigger group. The other thing to keep in, in mind here, we want to make these goals, I think I said this, want to make them smarter. So that means you want to make sure the goals are achievable. I mean, you were talking about that in relation to the survey. If you keep putting out goals there that aren't achievable because there aren't resources to achieve them, then department heads get discouraged and they start answering surveys and say, ah, this doesn't matter, right? So you want to, you want to make sure your goals are achievable, and you want to make them timely, right? You need to, every milestone that you put on here should have a date, right? It's not a milestone if you don't have a date, okay? Phil, anything to add there?
No, I think, I think you covered it.
So any, any questions for? Split you up? Okay. So Group A is going to stay in this room, and that's going to be Bob, Colin, and Jack. That means Peter, Doug, and Heather down the hall with Phil. And you'll have 30 minutes.
Good thing I have my snack already. Do you want to use that voice recorder?
Can we nudge the temperature down a little bit in here?
It was 100 degrees when I came in here.
Was it? Oh, man, well, thank you for turning it down already.
I had it off, and then it got a little cold.
Do you want to keep recording on this room?
Yes, sounds good.
Thank you.
What are our topics?
Phil has them. Phil has, Phil has everything down there.
My freshman year, the heat broke in my dorm room, so it turned on in August in DC, so it was 95 for the first two weeks of college.
Oh, my God.
I put it out in the drying, so let me know when it starts to feel like a castle dungeon.
Thank you.
Thank you for the practice.
We chose a new place, Begle Haven, over in Mashpee County.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Cool. Peter, you've changed. Gouty still. Okay. Why is my screen so dark?
All right, so we are going to work, well, one thing that I did, I did, made a kind of an executive. I did, made a kind of an executive decision here. Your, your strategic areas on finance and, and your strategic area on energy had, each had one goal. So I thought this group could do both of them in 30 minutes, okay? So we're going to deal with both of them. On the other hand, the organizational effectiveness and community engagement area had, I don't know, like 30 goals. So I divided those. I put those that were related to community engagement in one pile and those that were related to organizational effectiveness in another pile. So those will be worked on in separate groups the next round, okay? So let's start with energy.
Starting with energy.
You got, if you, if you don't have.
Five, I have property.
Make your notes.
Thank you.
And I'm going to bounce between the groups just before David gets started. And I'm just kind of acting as a resource.
You were going to, who's going to be our scrivener here?
I'm not, not, not me.
I'm typing.
I was going to say, not, not me either, so.
Hell, that leaves me. I'm typing.
I know, that makes more sense for you to do it. Thank you.
Okay. We're doing energy.
These are loaded on everybody's iPad, right? I mean, I don't know.
The, the plan is loaded on the iPad.
Yeah, that's.
The forms are.
The forms are, yeah, right.
All right. Energy, energy and sustainability. You have one goal in your current plan to explore partnerships with outside entities to identify proactive ways to encourage electric grid modifications through modernization. Okay. How do we feel about that goal?
I'm sorry. Hold on one second.
Looking for the corresponding page within the actual.
So page five of the plan.
Right, so I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
The goal is to explore partnerships with outside entities to identify proactive ways to encourage electric grid modifications through modernization. That is your single actionable, specific and actionable goal in the energy.
I think it's a little vague.
On page, page five, he's gone to the specific, to be clear.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I'm the little.
David has gone to the specific section, specific actionable goals, right? If you look on page five of the plan, there's a category called ongoing goals within the strategic priority area. But we've decided to focus on the specific actionable, which is page six.
On the back?
Yes, on the back, yeah.
So we're, that's the one we're talking about, not, not all the other ones that are listed?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Explore partnership, okay.
David, that's the convention you applied to the housing last session, right? Looking at the specific actionable.
The specific actionable, not the, not the other ongoing goals. Unless one, unless, you know, if you, if you see one of those other ongoing goals.
So does that mean we're going to keep them going forward? I mean, is that the idea is that those ongoing goals, which are very loosely, are we're going to still keep them in the plan?
You're going to keep them, you're going to keep them, yeah. Because I think they're general, they're, they're general enough that you don't really need to change, you know, change them. But if you see one in, in that area that you think, you know, hey, if we tweak this one a little bit, we could make it more actionable and specific, well, we can do that. We can, we can add it, but that's for next time.
So the specific actionable goals are those that we're trying to make smart, like David mentioned earlier, right?
Right.
Time-bound, right?
Working with PureSky and developing a solar project, that's.
That's very specific.
And, and certainly fits within that, that actionable goal, right? So we've done that.
Now, you just have to talk as a group as far as, you know, making that smarter. Maybe some milestones, some target dates, right? And some of the target dates, like, is included in, as you're thinking about this.
Let's start with, yeah.
Reference, reference this, this template, right?
And I really like.
They're all going to be all seven of them. We're going to be frank along those lines.
So who's, who's, who, who needs to participate? Let's start with that. Who needs to participate in this process?
Our sustainability coordinator. Our energy committee.
You have an ener, did you say energy?
We have an energy committee.
Yeah, energy committee.
Are they active?
I believe so, yeah. We've got a, a new applicant coming up at our next meeting that wants to be part of it. A very well-known person in the science community, the energy community, actually, nationally.
There it is, sorry.
So what, when, when, let's look at this goal. The goal says explore partnerships with outside agencies. What outside agencies?
Cape Cod Commission.
HOE, MBL. HOE and MBL. W H Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
We ask you why.
Y'all are the science people.
Yeah, but we do oceanography, not energy.
Do you do anything with tidal energy?
No.
No, never mind.
Okay.
I thought you guys did stuff with.
I mean, there might be API, but institutionally, I don't think going. May not be a, a strong alignment.
Yep, you'd know.
I think another outside stakeholder would be Eversource, you know, interconnection agreements that would be required.
And you're in Cape Cod Compact, right?
Yes, yeah, that would be another, yeah.
Yeah, Cape Cod Commission.
While we're identifying these, the word explore, is that too squishy?
Yes.
Okay, cool, all right, so.
I've always thought, consider and explore. I mean, yeah, I think we really need to, has to be like actionable.
Develop, develop.
Yes.
Develop is a good word.
Identify and develop?
Yep, I like that.
Because we need to figure out what we're developing before, so.
Yeah, but, but certainly the goal is to develop it, not to just, you know, explore, so.
Implement, right?
Yeah, however, yeah.
An action verb, about, yeah, not a.
Marine Renewable Energy Collaborative. I was trying to think of their name. There's this group that's trying to do a lot with tidal energy, that they're based here. And I think they're based in Marion, but they have a, a pretty big team in, in Marine Renewable Energy Collaborative.
I think your tie-in to HOE and MBL is not wrong. I just think it's going to be.
There's probably other areas.
Individuals within.
Yeah.
Not, not institution to town government. It'll be, you know, finding some specific stakeholders or knowledge brokers. But we can, I'll, I'll put them in because I don't think it's wrong, but we can also include Woodwell and others because we do have a strong scientific community.
Because, yeah, I guess they're just more of like a.
They can be an advisor.
Sourcing, yeah, sourcing.
I'm just going to put in scientific community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just lump them all in.
Yeah. You like lumping.
Yeah. You love lumping, you say?
Lumping things together.
Yeah, yes.
So when you have developed a partnership, that, that would be the finish line, right? Finish line is you now, you, you have implemented a partnership. You have created a partnership with somebody, right? You haven't identified exactly who that was going to be yet.
Excuse me.
Now. And when, how, how long do you think it's going to take you to get there? Is this a?
Well, what is it that we want to accomplish, actually? What, what concrete result would, would this be?
Encouragement doesn't seem to be enough. So we are in, to identify proactive ways to encourage electric grid modification, but don't we need to be a little stronger than just encouraging if we're going to identify, develop, and/or implement a plan? Again, I'm just looking, I'm attacking the squishy word.
So, yeah, so a lot of this, in my, my, the way I'm looking at this particular goal with regards to electric grid modification, a lot of that, Stephanie Madison, our sustainability specialist, knows more about this than, than I do. But a lot of that is the Eversource and at the state level, right? Investing in the infrastructure, right? The electric grid infrastructure, we're behind, the Cape is behind. And, and so a lot of those partnerships are going to be with, again, Eversource and lobbying and trying to get additional state resources devoted to improving our grid, is my understanding.
If I may say, I mean, I, I think that the, the, the problem with this one particular area is that, you know, I think we should be focusing on some maybe another or different specific actionable goals. I mean, this was something that was, you know, drafted in 2023 and we've just kept, you know, saying the same thing year after year. I'm, I'm wondering if we might not want to focus on one of these other ongoing goals or something that, that really has more relevance. I mean, this is certainly important, but I don't, I don't see that as such a, you know, critically important, you know.
I think one of the thing, one of the, one of the weaknesses of this particular goal is it doesn't tell you what.
What's the result?
What grid modification, what the benefit of it is, right? So if you said, we want to modify the grid because we're having too many power outages.
Or by reducing, you know, the overall cost to low-income family. I mean, you know, some result is what, what we're missing here.
It seems like this should just be part of a climate goal rather than a, a grid independent goal. But I mean, I guess the only thing you could suggest is, I'm not sure what a realistic percentage is, but like a percentage of FALMA's overall energy be from renewables, like solar or wind? I'm not sure what is a realistic percent, and it's also like the worst time to be developing those.
So we have, the state has a goal, right?
The state has a goal.
Net zero by, and, and all of our plans and objectives have to be focused on ultimately.
Yeah, aligning with, so to stay in line with, I think it's net zero by 23rd, 50, 30?
50, I believe.
They're trying to walk it back a little insider base, but you just have to align with Commonwealth's climate goals. Whatever, they, I'm sure they have an energy section.
What current problems do we have with the current grid? It's outdated?
It's the, the, the equipment, the infrastructure is, is not adequate to handle bringing on additional, I'll use this, the solar example, right? The large solar projects, the small ones. 15 kilowatt solar array that we put on the fire station in Hatchville was delayed because the infrastructure wasn't in place. So, so the, the infrastructure, the stuff that's beyond the town's control to directly impact, right? That's an Eversource investment that has to be made or the state has to assist in some way, the way I look at this. But it's, it's the equipment that is not adequate. It's antiquated, doesn't exist in some cases, so all of the, all of that.
So.
So a lot of this is not within the town. The, the issue I have with this goal is, is I look at the department heads and say, do this because this is a priority. They don't have a lot of direct impact and it's, it's, it's hard for them to come up with key performance indicators. The stuff they do day to day, that's exactly at the heart of why we're. So that goal is kind of, it's hard to, it's hard for the departments to, to, you know, when, when we can make it concrete, right? Establish or identify or implement partnerships with, but how do they do, how does? Stephanie Madison does a good job establishing partnerships.
The solar canopies would be the only thing of like, what I can think of where they've actively pursued, like, what can we pursue, that's probably the extent of it.
And David's an expert in this, not, more, more so than I am, but I, you know, to the extent that we can make this more project-specific, I think is going to help us, help us out.
So that's why, I mean, I would say, I mean, if you look at the ongoing goals at the beginning of this, you know, this, this goal or this, this priority area, like, focus on enhance and promote efforts to improve composting and recycling. We're doing a real good job there. It's measurable, there are things we could do. We have more sites for composting like the SWAC wants to do. You know, recycling, we've talked, you know, I mean, you know, the, it's just something that I think if we list, we've really got some meat behind what we need to do. It's within our control for the most part.
What do you think, David, about carrying that, that, that ongoing goal over to the specific actionable? Because there are some projects underway at the county level with regards to.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say, the county, that's what I meant, the county, that whole county thing.
So that's something that we could certainly, in my opinion, and I don't want to mess up. I was here to kind of just answer some questions, but, you know, dragging that over into the.
So I'm, what I, I'm, where I am right now is you, you don't want to keep this goal. This goal doesn't really, doesn't really work.
Not that it's not, not necessarily keep it, but I'm not sure it's the one we, you know, we'd be necessarily focusing on.
Right, so I, I think we're looking at a whole new set of goals for this area.
Could have led with that.
Well, I wanted to hear, you know, I wanted to hear what you had to say before I came to that conclusion.
The entire feeling of the entire board is, you know, that, you know, we're somewhat hamstrung by what has been done and for which I'm responsible for two years on the board, not, you know, not addressing it and Doug, you know, other years. But, you know, so you want us, and rightly so, to be working within the confines of what we have, but everybody has really good ideas about really what should be our strategic plan going forward that's more specific, manageable, you know, with, with real good milestones. So we're kind of, you know, like between a rock and a hard place and, you know, and it's putting a strain on you, you know, and, and, you know, it's trying to keep us on, on task, but, but I think, would you agree, Colin, to a certain extent?
Yeah, I think the goals here are a bit squishy. It's not saying we want to, like, and I think about the awesome dashboard that you presented to us and the example from Atlanta or wherever, right? Where it was like, we want to reduce emissions by X amount and then you had like that goal, but we don't have that here. We just have explore a partnership, but like to what end? And that's kind of where we were going, which was, okay, we know we need infrastructure. So I look at it as kind of like a three-tiered system, which is where do we want to go as a town to direct our energy? Not necessarily our staff and the daily operations, but it plays into it. But where do we need to go as a town directionally with the state and other things? What is actionable immediately for our, our budget concerns, right? Because we might find that there is something we can put into our capital budget later on or, or for the next year, which is like to, to get the state funding, we actually need this grid improvement and we put that in and now because we have that, we can get this. And then there's the daily operations, to your point, which is this one doesn't really hit them until something happens. So I wasn't against scrapping it, but because we didn't, we weren't playing, where we didn't know which stakeholder group was owning it. If we only go through town departments, well, then this goal doesn't really affect anything, to your point, right? But it is something that we need to do for town. So where, where it lands and the responsibility is actually an interesting one because it's another thing that you have to oversee, but, yeah, it's, it's a difficult one because it doesn't, it's not tied to a goal to improve something by an X percentage or we're not building another compost site, so we don't have a number. But it is an important one, right? Like, we need the infrastructure.
David, can I, and I don't want to bog down, but so part of Colin's question right now, in my opinion, has always been the difference between a goal, a broad policy, strategic goal, and then an objective that you undertake a task to achieve that goal, right? So, and again, I don't want to overcomplicate this, but I, I think what we're missing are, and I guess it's the departments that Peter and I are working with to create those KPIs, right? That become the objectives, right? So trying to frame a broad goal under which we can put in place these very specific tasks or objectives. And I'll give you a perfect example. That, the problem I have with that goal right now is that a lot of it is beyond our ability to influence and impact, right? So, but I'm not saying we take it out, but I think it's, we have to massage it. Bob's point about the composting under the sustainability, I think that's a great, has a lot of potential because there's actionable, time-bound. because there's actionable, time bound steps, right, that we can, we can talk about in partners. So if, if, if you all are in agreement, I would suggest maybe throwing that enhance and promote efforts to improve composting. Change it around, like implement a composting program by FY, you know, 28.
And interested parties are the SWAC committee, you know, Stephanie.
Barnstable County, Joint Base Cape Cod, because all of those, and I'm saying this because there's already a movement in that direction. And, and this will allow us at the department level to create again those tasks or objectives, right, to accomplish this goal. So I throw that, I suggest throwing that into the specific actionable goal category. Keep the one that's currently there, we can massage the language. Another example, I think, is the promote and provide infrastructure to support electric vehicles and continue to investigate viability of electric vehicles.
Yeah, that could be, those two could be combined, numbers two and three could be combined. And we're doing, you know, a fairly good job and, you know, we have some real milestones we've gotten, although the police don't like the electric vehicles.
Well, and Stephanie has developed, and, and I, I think, you know, in my mind, a broad goal would be implement, implement the electrification, fleet electrification plan by FY, and again, you always want to push yourself, right? You want to, don't want to get too far up, by FY 28.
So you're, you're, you're on exactly the right track, right? Your goal needs to be specific enough that it is achievable and you need to know what your finish line is, right? And that, but that isn't enough, right? You can say, implement the fleet electrification program by this date. Well, there are steps between that and that date that need to happen, right? At, at a minimum, there's a review, right? You, you've set this goal, you want it done by this date. You know, at a minimum, a milestone is when do you want to get a progress report? That, those kinds of things. So you're on the right track. I, I, I still have to say that this goal that you have is way too vague. Doesn't, just doesn't talk about why, it doesn't talk about what you want to accomplish except create a partnership. Create a partnership to do what? To modernize the electric grid? Why? What's the benefit you get? Are you trying to do that because you, you, it doesn't have the capacity to accept more distributed generation from solar and wind or whatever? Or it does, or you're getting power outages every time there's a, a wind over 30 miles an hour?
Yeah, no, it's less, it's less about the power outage, it's more about, we talked about the, the, the small example of the fire station, the solar panels on the roof. We, we were delayed in installing those because the grid wasn't able to.
To accept it.
To accept it. So, so that, that's the crux of it. Yeah, it's a, in order to, in, in order for the town to further advance its goal towards net zero by 2050. And I think that's right, but maybe. Establish partnerships with these other entities, right? And, and again, I, I think, and that's where I have a struggle, I struggle with this one because a lot of it is beyond. And to, no, I don't think the town makes those capital investments because it's ever sources infrastructure. And there's probably another organization out there that I'm not quite sure of. I know Stephanie's got some more details, maybe she can feed us, but that's kind of the, the issue that I have with this as a goal is, is it realistic and achievable, attainable, I should say? I'm not so sure because a lot of it's beyond our control, certainly beyond the department level control to do it. So whereas the other things that we just talked about, the vehicle electrification, the fleet electrification and the composting, I mean, those are programs that, that are directly within our.
As is the next one too, the, although it needs to be tightened up. You know, the, and townwide solar, what we've done with the schools and, and, you know, rooftop and, and so forth. We're actually doing that and looking to do it in more places.
And again, I, and again, I, the, that's, in my mind, that's like an objective or a task that achieves the ultimate goal of going net zero by 2050, right? So maybe that's the broader policy goal, achieving that zero. I mean, but the, the specific task of working with the schools to, you know, wherever possible, carport, solar panels, that sort of thing. Those are very, those are, those are objectives underneath that goal, I think, right? That's how I feel.
Okay.
I just don't know how we list those, David, in the, in this, within this template.
Well, the, the, the third session was going to be devoted to adding new, to adding new goals. So this is a good conversation to have. Now, you, I think we've, we've accomplished here is we've identified this area as the one that's ripe for a whole bunch of new goals.
Right.
You have, you want to, I'm saying new, new acts, specific and actionable goals. They may be old, they may be listed somewhere else in the plan, but to be added here. So I think your report back to the full board should be that, you know, we've discussed this area. There's, there's a lot of opportunity here for some goals that are achievable. We all need to think about what those are for next time and come prepared to, to start listing them.
So, so going forward, just so I understand, you're basically focusing in the current strategic plan, those specific, you know, that, that specific title and what's under that as focusing us going forward? Not the, you know, all the squishy stuff at the, at the, at the beginning.
Well, part of the problem, frankly, if I would be frank about your plan is.
Please.
There's some of the specific and actionable goals are squishier than some of the, the other goals.
You're articulating what, what I think we've all said up to this point, but I'm going to ask one thing, Mike. I know you want to go back and forth and I know Peter's in there. I mean, I would think we would be better served if you could stay here with us rather than going back and forth. Only because I think we need someone that's really familiar with what's going on in town, you know, and staff to, to help guide our discussion.
We're all going to come back and report out anyway, so I'll be able to, to chime in and hear what.
I mean, I just hope, you know, I, I know I would benefit from some, you being here.
Let's move on to financial and economic stability.
This one has a lot, doesn't it?
This has one, it has one specific and actionable goal and.
Here, this, this is Blake, give it to you.
Sorry. But a lot of ongoing goals.
That is, that, that's, that's the issue, the framework under which this was created initially. Like David said, I mean, sometimes the squishiness appears in the specific actionable goals, right? Sometimes the, the more concrete, and, and in my, in my mind, the smarter goals are, are found within the ongoing goals in a lot of cases, right?
Yeah.
And I don't know if the, if the group is willing to, and maybe it's a suggestion with the bigger group, but move, transition some of the ongoing goals over under this.
Like we just did with.
Well, like we talked about, I'm not sure we did it yet, I'm sure we talked about it.
We'll do it next.
So something that I've found in reading this is, and I think we're, everybody has their own, you know, flow down of nomenclature. So whether it goes objective, goals, strategies, tactics, or goals, objectives, strategy, tactics. The language often has, I think, the dashboard language that we want without the numbers. So in financial stability, you know, in here, we want to promote long-term financial stability of the town to maintain triple A bond rating. That's like the overall arching thing that we want, which is like the beauty of this town. We need to maintain it. To maintain it, we need to do these strategic goals. To get within each of these strategic goals, here are the strategies and tactics to do. And it's all kind of like mushed together a little bit on, in the language of the current document. So when, you know, out of all that, you look at the one that you just gave to us on the single grid, implement the integrated financial management system approved by town meeting. Well, that's not a goal that I would see as on your dashboard. That's just a tactic that adds to the bigger overall goal. So something, you know, you said it earlier on, kind of, we might get to a point where we scrap, but right now we're trying to improve.
Right.
The question is, for you, Michael, what do you think? In this financial and economic stability, and I appreciate you saying like, don't change, because this is great. Is like, from your perspective, what, what should be the overarching goals, financial and economic stability that then leads to strategies and tactics that we can help develop?
Yeah, so you just mentioned one of them under the ongoing goals. And that, that is ensuring, not promoting, but ensuring long-term financial stability of town operations. I mean, that's very general, very broad. But that is, I think that's the pinnacle of what the financial and economic stability, now, so the financial stability priority area is all about, ensuring the long-term financial health of, of the town.
And then to your point, how do you make that a smart goal? Which is, you know, we have to maintain it. Maintain is an A or B, right? Ensuring is nice, but maintaining our triple, uh, financial stability is, gives us a, A or B. We either did it or we don't. At what completion rate? Because when do we get bond rating? When do we get this? When do we get that? And those become subtasks of that overall goal. So if we were to change this, which I think we, we're heading in that direction, is, you know, maintain long-term financial stability of operations, you know? And to your point, I'm trying to think of what are the, what are the, what are the smart components that we add to that, right? Because by when, it's kind of overall arching, but, you know, when is our next bond rating, you know?
Yeah, we just had one. So I, you know, what, what, big picture, maintaining, and this speaks to health and, of financial health, is maintaining that triple A. That's a huge priority and goal should be, right? Maintaining the triple A bond rating. Now, to accomplish that, there's a lot of things that have to be done, where you have to manage debt obligations smartly. And we can, we can flesh out those things when we get back as a bigger group. And then the finance director can help give some additional, because there's a checklist.
Yeah.
David knows this, and some of you may have seen it too, right?
Yeah, when you go out for a, when you go out to borrow, right, the, your, your financial advisor gets down with their rating agency and they, they have a whole list of, of things they want to see and they give you a rating. I think those should be articulated more, what, that list in some fashion, not in tremendous amount of detail, but managing debt appropriately, maintain, you have financial policies, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what elements of your financial policy? And making, making sure that you, your, your financial policies, I'm sure, were adopted in order to maintain your financial stability and your bond rating, right?
We talked about debt stabilization in the fiscal policy and, and, yeah, we.
Possible override?
Right, right.
You're right.
The only thing I would like to say about this one is I almost feel like it should be two separate goals. Because I think focusing more on municipal finances is easier to do. And I, I, I just, for example, the connection between support development for improved high-speed internet service has nothing to do with some of the other goals that we're doing. I know that's good for the, and we should absolutely do that for the economic health of the town as a whole and some of these other goals, like support business and community development to promote a vibrant local economy. But I think that's so far removed from the fiscal responsibility and the fiscal practices we want to do as a town. I think that it should either be a separate goal or just, I mean, that just kind of seems like something that, like, is it given?
A separate priority, separate priority area, right now.
Yeah, either separate priority areas.
For the health of the town and the economic stability.
Well, that's, I mean, you know, that, and that point is being made constantly, you know, that, that finance and, and economic stability are, are completely different concepts, right? I mean, you know, people look at the stock market as, you know, their measure of how well the economy is doing. And we all know that that, that's where people look first, but that has really nothing to do with the economy and the economic stability. So if that's where you were going, Jack, I have an issue with that. And that's the priority area about lumping the, the two of them together because they're, they're, they're different, they're different priorities.
Particularly funny to me yesterday when the, the NASDAQ fell three points because the jobs report was too good. I was like, wow.
I think.
But then it rallied.
And then it rallied on Friday.
Well, and I think this, the separation is actually really key because, and, and, Michael, we talked about this when the EDIC, you know, the co-chairs and Wayne came to talk to you. And we talked about that we haven't had necessarily an economic development or an economic stability kind of strategic goal process or whatever in town. And, and I would agree with what we're kind of saying here, which is there's a difference between financial stability. And I think we've done an extremely good job and our job is to maintain that high level rating and all that stuff. And the other piece is how do we serve, protect and enhance the economic conditions of town? Because, you know, if we look at our sectors, we're travel and tourism first, right? We have a strong technology and science sector, but there's other things. And I feel like those belong separate from the financial operations of town. And it's more of about an, it's, it's legitimately economic development and business development and support, right?
So the group is thinking that splitting these into two separate, now this is.
Priority area.
We had to discuss this more about having, having it, splitting those out because they are too distinct, right?
And I think it would make it easier to make both of them have more actionable goals that are connected, those are connected within one another.
Process question, is the other group, are they going to be talking about these two as well?
No.
Okay, so it's just us reporting, just from our perspective. So if we go back to financial, what is the goal? And then if we were to, we can just leave it as a hanging chat for next time, which is we can work on economic stability the next time. But for the immediate needs of financial, we need, we should come up with a clear and concise goal and then objectives that are measurable, right? Because right now, we have in my notes, the maintain triple A bond rating, to do what, by when, right?
Okay, and you're scrapping this goal, I'm saying, I'm guessing. Implement, implement the integrated financial management system approved by town meeting. Now, that's, seems pretty specific to me, right? Town meeting has approved a system.
Yeah, and, and it's, the implementation is underway right now and we're at about probably 70% in terms of, it's the Munis, Tyler Munis software, financial management package. So, yeah, we're, departments are working towards implementing that now. I just, I don't, Jack, to, to me, that seems like that is a, a, a tactic or an objective to accomplish the broader picture, right? Implementing a piece of software, this is a big piece of software. But I mean, it's, you know, that, that enterprise software package is just a means to accomplish that broader goal of, you know, financial vitality, you know, maybe stability. I've heard Heather say this before too, let's not shoot for stability, like, why not prosperity or something, something like that? And I, I don't want to go too much done that rabbit hole, but, you know, so, so, but again, that's kind of how my mind is looking at this right now. I think it is a good idea to talk about breaking these two into two separate priority areas. But again, with, to, to David's question, the currently listed specific actionable goal, to me, is more of, 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 of an objective to achieve a broader goal of.
Yeah, I, I mean, now that I know what it is, it's, it's implementing, it didn't, you know, it's implementing Munis.
It's just a check.
That's, that's a milestone, right? Your, your goal is to maintain your triple A bond rating. Well, one of the milestones is, you know, your new financial software package is going to be implemented by the state.
Yeah, and it's going to allow us, enable us to have better financial reporting and tighter financial controls, right? All of that feeds up to that triple A bond rating, right?
Yeah.
Better cash control.
We think we're 75%?
70%.
70%?
And I think that just plays into our overall discussion, which is if our overall goal is maintain triple A bond rating, how do we do it? And I think we started talking about, this is one of the many tactics to do that. Implement and integrate a financial management system approved by town meeting. We can add in by, you know, whatever the goal is. The other two that we talked about in this discussion is we need to manage debt obligations. And, you know, I think the goal is, well, we can manage and say, yeah, we did. But, you know, to the everyday reader, we want to say, manage debt obligations, you know, not to exceed blank in current fiscal year. Or, you know, what is that measurable thing so that it says, yep, cool, we have bond rating? And then update financial policies to do what, you know, by when? So maybe we don't because we, it's an ongoing thing, but those are the things that we talked about.
Right, that's really a performance indicator, right? Right, and that's, that's what, that's what the. what the, you're, you're setting the stra, you're, this is a strategic vision, right? And your strategic vision for the town is keep that triple A bond rating.
Yep.
Right? If you were to double A, your vision might be obtain a triple A bond rating, right? And all of these things are part of that.
Yep.
Right? And then all of those, all of those, uh, objectives under that strategic goal are going to have performance indicators, right?
Yep.
One of them is, would be, um, you know, keeping the, uh, the, the debt, uh, percentage of debt to budget at below X, right?
Right, 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 right.
I think that, you know, clarifies it, because we can simplify, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, we can simplify a lot of these things to keep very high-level goals and not necessarily get into, um, town management's knickers. It's something that, you know, sets an overall goal. Keep bond rating done, you know, like.
Right. Well, keeping the bond rating triple A is going to require a number of things that, to be done, you know? And those are your milestones, right? Well, milestone number one is get that Munis implemented a hundred percent. Now, so number two might be, uh, I don't know, but it, it might be, uh, uh, you know, reduce the, the level of borrowing to below five percent of the budget.
Managed debt obligation.
I think, you know, managed debt obligation. So we're talking now about internally, I just had a conversation with the FinCom Chair about, um, how certain municipalities have a, uh, debt management, um, platform, right? Sometimes they use consultants, right, to do this for them. Other times they do it in-house, but that might be, you know.
So, you know, when things are coming off and things are added, so if you try and keep it balanced as much as you can.
If our goal is that triple A and you have that, and I keep going back to that visual dashboard, like, if you say manage debt obligations, I feel like that scale is like, you know, if under this number, we're good. And if we happen to dial in on July 1st and we see that it's, that we've exceeded that number, and now we're risky, now we know, hey, let's, we got to figure out how to nudge that back down into the acceptable level. And that's like, I like the visual, as we think about these goals, how do you, how do you have that visual dashboard? Because that's, I think it's important for us to have. But anyways.
You know, and one of, one of your strategic goals might be, are one of your, it, it might be, um, maintain unrestricted, your unrestricted fund balance, right, at, at this dollar level, others percentage.
Free cash.
Right? Uh, your free cash plus your stabilization funds, right? And then your milestones would be, um, add a hundred thousand dollars to, uh, your capital stabilization fund, uh, in fiscal twenty-seven, right?
We do have language in the fiscal policy that talks about, um, that level of capital and, and debt stabilization investment, right? So maybe we need to take a sharper look at that as we, as we try to flesh out.
Two, two things I have. Support opportunities, generate additional funds for community housing is currently living under this goal. But we wrote a, kind of a better version of that, uh, or you did, actually, in this goal. So moving that.
Yeah, together with plan for use development disposition of town property, which some of those sites, you know, aren't really within what we're talking about.
And the other.
And we've done it in, in others, uh, sites. I don't remember if we, how we handled that in the housing one that we did the first time around about, I know you, you gave us a copy of that, David. Uh, you know, now that those RFPs have been.
Yeah, I mean, those are just based on my notes.
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't remember how we, where we landed on that, but that's certainly something we should probably add as something we've done, right, for, for that priority area.
And the other goal I just wanted to quickly talk about that I don't love, uh, in terms of like, can we do something on this? Respond to fiscal impacts, later market volatility, increase in population working remotely, inflation. And then the rest of it's fine, exploring new grant revenue opportunities. I think that could be its own goal that we could edit. But that first part, I mean, Mike, what are you going to do about inflation? Like, you can solve that problem.
Not a hell of a lot.
Yeah. So, like, things like that, I, I just, I just think that's unrealistic to ask of, of the town.
Yeah, that's an example of how, you know, if, if we're going to make changes to those ongoing goals, we probably need to strike that, I would agree. And then, you know, and try to make, because I do agree that, um, we should be focusing more on identifying new grant opportunities. We have grant consulting funding available, the town meeting gave us a year ago, and we haven't even leveraged that yet. So, you know, maybe, you know.
And revenue with respect to like the WIF, what we're thinking about.
Yes.
As an, as an increased.
Yeah.
Revenue source.
Revenue sources, yeah, yeah. But again, I, I struggle sometimes with strategic plan, your document, your policy document, and so you give that direction, maintain triple A bond rating, uh, to ensure, um, ongoing financial vitality of the town. And then the, myself and Peter and the department heads come up with those steps, right, that achieve that goal. Is that, and, and one of those is identifying grant funding sources.
Well, you know, a strategic goal statement, right, is, is, it's, it's, it'd be specific, but it's also got to be pretty broad. You can be broad and specific at the same time, right?
Okay, right.
Because, and what I mean by broad is that it might have several elements in it. So one of the elements in, uh, maintaining that triple A bond rating is, uh, what's your free cash situation, right? How much, uh, unrestricted funds do you, do you have?
Mm-hmm.
Right? So a milestone under that strategic goal of maintaining would be, um, to have, to make that unrestricted bu, fund balance equal to X by X date. And how you get there is now you, you, you put together the tactics that get you to that date, right?
So, I mean, is that a?
But the question really is, at what level, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have this document that is policy and, and high level. At what point do we add in management's tasks to achieve that? So that, I'm hearing like a hybrid, that there are some things we can add into the overall objective, but I don't think we want to over prescribe, right?
Right. You don't want to over prescribe, but you need to prescribe something, right? You need, you need to give the town manager and the department heads enough specificity that they can align with it. It's hard to align with an amorphous ball of gelatin.
So should the implement integrated financial management system actually be part of a policy or a task? If, if our, if our overall thing is keep triple A bond rating by maintaining free cash and stabilization funds, managing debt, and updating financial policies, those seem very high level compared to implement. That seems very, uh, that seems two levels down. That's how we get to those overall. Like, where should we clock in on this?
Well, I think, I, if I were me, I would put implementing the Munis system as one of the milestones. I would say, we want to maintain our triple A bond rating. One of the things that we've identified that'll help us do that is this Munis system. We got town meeting to approve the funding. We're implementing it. We want to see it implemented by this date. That's your milestone. And then it's up to him to, to work with the town, uh, finance director or account accountant, or treasurer, whoever you have, to get that implemented, right?
Okay.
And that includes, and then the level of detail that comes in on the management side is, okay, there's train, there's, there's a whole bunch of training that has to happen when you put in a new financial software system. There's, there's testing. There's, you know, there's a whole schedule.
But we don't need to get into that here.
You don't need to get into that here.
Yeah, okay.
He does that. But you're saying, you, our strategic vision is that the Munis software is part of keeping the triple A bond rating. We want to see that Munis software in by this date. That's our milestone. Town manager meet the milestone.
Okay, so they are going to tie a specific, like, by implements and, and have operational, the Tyler Munis financial management system by FY twenty-eight, as an example, right? So that's their role, is setting that time bound. Okay.
Right. Okay. So I've let this go on. We're going to run out of time if I don't, we don't move on. So I'm going to go down the hall, um, and get the others. You are, um...
This is Group A?
This is Group A, and where's my list?
Does the group stay the same? No.
No, they're all except the groups.
So.
Doug and Jack, you're going to Group B for the next round, okay?
Doug's over there. Sorry, I'll hang out with Doug.
Bob.
Group B, round two. Oh, you, just.
Just me.
Yeah, Jack. Jack and, uh.
Doug's with us.
Colin are switching.
So you're going over there, and I guess Doug and.
Doug and somebody.
Heather will come back here.
Well, it's.
And I'm going to the bathroom.
Yeah, yeah, hold on. I'm going to do my best to read these notes, and I'm going to need you all to jump in.
Look at how your computer looks pretty.
Well, I think the scrivener has to also be the person who's going to record out.
No, Colin, I'm sorry, you're staying here. Just Jack.
Just me. All right.
Okay.
Goodbye.
Be gone with him.
Doug is taking up place.
Yeah.
So Doug's coming in here. Okay.
Mike, sorry, I keep calling you Michael. I have a friend that's like, I'm Michael. And I'm like, huh.
Yeah, I've had friends that prefer Michael, too. Either way, I'm, uh, struggling with this a little bit. It's going to be, I, I think what we need to do, you know, this is, you know, a five-year plan.
Yeah.
But I really do think we need to, as a group, right, um, next year, right, or when, we need, we need to, the foundations, I think, need to be looked at, right? I, I think it's, yeah, it's too hard, it's hard, it's difficult to make these, these tweaks, in my mind, right, to a, to a plan that, I think the formatting was always an issue. You know, and again, I, I'm sitting here right now. I've been here two and a half years, Colin. I don't know the difference between an ongoing goal and specifically actionable. I mean, I, why did they, why did they do that? I don't, I don't know. I think there should be, you know, um, some, some discussion about the structure, right? Broad policy goal, and then objectives, which I, I think it's not stepping over a line for this governing body to set objectives. And then we develop tasks, right, at the department level, to meet those objectives, which ultimately roll up to fulfill those goals.
I couldn't agree more.
So the formatting of this thing is a little bit of a challenge, trying to like step in every year and like tweak it, right? And past, past versions of this have been just changing language, right? Um, at least now we're like trying to strip it down and, and kind of like, you know, look under the hood a little bit more and, and.
I, I think your dashboard is our example.
Yeah.
Which is really like, we're going to have a high-level objective, but it's going to have other things in there that kind of show that bar.
But you know the problem with that? And, and I, I think I, I don't think I put the cart completely before the horse, but ideally you want a very strong plan.
Correct.
That's laid out properly. And then you build a software platform around that. I think I've done it a little bit in reverse order.
Well, you had to, based on what we currently have. But I think that, what I'm saying is use the visual, visualization of what we could be measuring as the example to help us actually define, what are those things that we do want to measure as a policy board?
Right.
And then the milestones therein, so that we can see where the bar is. Not, not using that as the, as the source of our work. It's more of like, we are aiming to have this dashboard.
Yeah.
That is awesome. That is reflective of these overall goals. And I think one of the things we can do, as you say, is draw line in the sand. And we just start with the nomenclature. So we've got, you know, objective or goal, or whatever that overarching thing is.
Right.
Then what is that subdivision?
Yeah.
Which is, um, strategy. How do we achieve those strategy through these tactics? But just formulate, so we have the same language.
Mm-hmm.
But then that's how we end up coming up with those goals, to then write the language. And right now, to your point, I think it's a, kind of a hodgepodge of both, or all three.
Mm-hmm.
Ongoing versus new versus this versus that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah. Because, again, going back to that survey, you're busting your chops trying to go through that and be like, how are we going, like, and even, like, is this an ongoing? Is this what? Is this this? And before you know it, it's just like, we need to go.
Yeah, yeah. Well, our strategic plan is evolving from, uh, something that was, I think, designed just to pacify board members to think that they were being strategic, to now something that's actually functional. So it's an evolution that's.
I like, I like that frame.
It's changed a lot. We talked about, before you came in, we talked about, Colin and I were talking about the need, you know, we, we recognize this as a five-year plan and maybe the need next year, right, or as this plan winds down, right, to, to, to kind of go back and take a look at the formatting and the structure of this thing. Is it really what, you know, is this really what we want to continue, um, you know, rolling on every year? I don't think it is, honestly. I think that there's, it needs some major modifications as far as the structure of it, so.
It's sometimes the overall.
Any, I agree. So, but, but I, I mean, this plan brings us to twenty-twenty-seven.
Correct, right.
Um, would we be, be keeping this, you know, still formatted, or are we thinking that we're going to scrap this and really look to, instead of waiting till, you know, twenty-twenty-eight, basically?
Right.
To, to, to scrap it and start a new five-year plan in twenty-twenty-six? I mean, for long term, is that what we're thinking?
Going to take, I just, 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 it's going to take time. If you're going to start from scratch, it's going to take months to get through a, a full strategic planning process. So if you're thinking about you want something to succeed this plan after twenty-seven, I would say that you're going to have to start working on it in the latter half of tw, it, 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 you have to, probably next.
Can we overlap them?
Next spring.
Yeah.
You know, you, twenty, you probably have to start working on it, spring of twenty-six, summer of twenty-six at the latest.
Yeah, so one of the things I want to take away from today's session is just that, right? Small things at the time. We've had kind of.
Yeah.
General discussions about is this really what we want and going forward and, you know, after FY twenty-seven, what then? So, yeah, I want to take away, because Peter and I can then start reaching out and, as David's saying, we have to have a lead-in, right, planning a six-month period, right, to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least.
Well, if you're going to go through to identifying your stakeholders.
And then budgeting for that.
And then have.
Doing the FY twenty-seven budget right now, right? Operational budget, right, in April town meeting. So, yeah, well, I'll talk to Peter after. But if the consensus of the, of the select board is, this has served us well, but it's time to move to a, to a, to an even better plan, um, then that's what I need to take.
Well, I think, I think just the fact that we've started this process and we're getting an outside objective look at what we're producing, it's going to change anyway. And maybe it's only going to get us halfway there, but it'll get us set, so that next year we can do even better, take it to the next level. I don't think we want to just try to start a whole new thing, because you've got enough to do every day, right?
Mm-hmm.
That could be a big workload, trying to envision it and make it happen and then have buy-in from everybody. I think it has to be a gradual transition.
Okay, so we're here.
What priority area are we?
Now, we are talking about community engagement.
What number is that?
That, right now, you have.
Municipal service specifically.
So it's, it's six.
Easier to navigate.
Organizational effectiveness and community engagement.
But I just gave you a spreadsheet there. What I did was I took all of the goals that have to do with community engagement out of that organizational effectiveness and community engagement.
This had a lot in it.
Yeah, so I put just the community engagement ones on that spreadsheet.
Okay, that's what I was looking to see. So you, none of the organizational stuff is in here?
No, the other group is working on that right now.
I see. Okay.
Okay. There were just too many to do in one group. Okay. So the first one is make municipal services, specifically the town website, easy to navigate. So shouldn't, shouldn't you just say make the town website easy to navigate?
Yeah. Fix the town website could do it. But unfortunately, we were in a contract that's going to expire this year finally, yeah?
Say, with the.
Web contractor, uh, we signed a contract for the web, and we only, we already did our one overhaul, and there's nothing we can really do.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're using Civic Plus right now, um, is the, the foundation of the, of the web. And I know there's been some talk about a redesign. Um, I don't know. I think it's, I'll talk to, uh, to Diane and Peter. I'm not sure if we have, if we're in the end of the, end of the cycle.
I think it's coming up the end of this year. I'm not really sure. But that's the answer I got. We couldn't really do a lot, because it's a vendor contract, and we already used up our one-time big. our one-time big tune-up, which was pretty unfortunate to hear, but I gotta say, it's a, it's a result of years and years of underfunding IT, which we didn't really understand that we were so neglectful, until our IT director quit, and I saw her at the supermarket, and she told me the story of why she retired earlier than she had hoped to, and that's just very unfortunate. And now they're still trying to catch up. The stuff's so outdated, they can't even transfer files, they have to manually enter.
Can.
So, for this call, this call, this call's pretty specific. It's, it's, it's borderline strategic. I think we can leave it in there, but if.
Isn't it just a milestone?
What, yeah, what's your finish line? You, you wanna have a new website, redesigned website up and running by what date?
For what purpose?
Functionality.
I think that's the, that's the overarching thing that we're missing here. This is a milestone of how to achieve something bigger, right?
So people can access meeting agendas in minutes?
Information, just information.
What's the success rate, right? I mean, what, what's the, you know, how, how do we know that that's been accomplished? I think that's Colin's question.
Try it, go on the website and see if it works.
But how do we know who's doing it? I mean, I get.
But there's an overarching goal here for community engagement. The community engagement goal is to foster a, to implement better systems that will achieve greater transparency, would, but that, you know, by such and such, and then of that objective, we then have some strategies that kind of break down into sectors, that this municipal, this town website is one milestone that we need to take credit for if and when we do it. But what is it helping to achieve? Is that larger thing? And again, this goes back to the discussion that we were just having, which is, what is our community engagement goal?
Well, what does it say in the plan?
Wouldn't, wouldn't a, a milestone be, you know, increase the number of people, you know, the number of views to the website? I mean, wouldn't that be a, you know, a measure?
That would be a measurement.
A measurable milestone, right?
That would be a, a performance measurement, I would, I would say. That would be.
No, I mean, we, the milestone could be, you know, take the number and say, we wanna hit this, this number. We wanna increase it by 25%.
I would like all municipal services to be available online. That'd be a goal. Like all your beach stickers, anything that you need to do should be easily accessed online. All the information you need.
Online permitting, you know, yeah. Allow, allow. Community to access or.
All municipal services.
All municipal services.
Online.
Online.
So this, I mean.
That's.
High-level.
It's a high goal, but.
Section six is organizational effectiveness and community engagement. I would say, let's separate the two of them, because organizational effectiveness is different than community engagement.
Yeah, we're just in the engagement.
Yeah.
We're just in the engagement, but it also goes into organizational effectiveness, 'cause to our point, we can't do these things online. They require very manual processes, and we often hear, ugh, it's impossible to navigate and figure out where to get X, Y, or Z. So maybe organizational effectiveness is, how do we work as town, soup to nuts? Community engagement is, how does the community engage or dial into whatever necessary? Like, FCTV is one of those for community engagement, right? They can watch our stuff, they know where to go.
Right. Doug, I think your suggestion is effectiveness, not, it, it, there's a communication element, there's an engagement element, but it's effective. You want, you want to change how, how people do things with the town, right? You wanna, you know, be able to pay your bills and get your permits and do everything online. That's an effectiveness issue. I think that's, I think that's a goal for the other group. I think what we're looking at here is, how are we, how are we engaging with the community?
How are we?
Yeah. Are we, how do you want to improve community engagement?
But Doug's not wrong. I mean, it's, his goes into organizational effectiveness, and we should not lose having all municipal services online, right? That is a major milestone, that we can, you know, to be online by a certain time, because that's what we're hearing, right?
We hear nothing but complaints about inability to navigate the website.
Right.
And that turns people off and pushes them away.
Right, I, I understand that, but is it inability to navigate the website for the things that you have currently on the website, right? People have, are finding it hard to do the things on the website that they currently should be able to do. There's a whole other category of things that you don't have set up, like online permitting, right? You're not, you're not.
We've started.
You've started.
We have the building department, but we still need to do zoning and planning and all that.
And, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that's a more, that fits more in the community, the, the organizational effectiveness category.
I, I would agree. I would agree. You know, as I'm reading through the, the preamble, right, of this community engagement, I'm trying to get the original sense, right, what the board then was trying to achieve, right?
I'm not.
They talk about public particip, how to increase, enhance public participation. That's less about like being able to, to, to get a piece of information off the website. I think that is about how effective we are as an organization, making those services available. This is more of a public participation, and how we, how you as a select board, the governing body, interact.
All right, well, maybe then it's a whole different thing than what I was thinking of. Maybe we need to start going to the schools.
Community forums.
Having forums.
Community conversation.
Get the kids more interested in local government.
Yeah, I mean, well, we've got the civic, you know, the civic academy that we're.
Right, but we don't participate in that.
Really? Well, we're.
Yeah, you will.
Yes, we will, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, certainly, one of them's gonna be the select board, you know, being, you know, the, the facilitator or whatever, you know, and we're certainly gonna be part, you know, going to the other ones that.
Maybe we should have liaisons to village association meetings.
Yeah, you know, I've, I've, I've said that, and I've started myself going to the village association. I've gone to West Falmouth, I've gone to East Falmouth, you know, absolutely.
The best stuff.
We're on the right path now.
Yeah.
But what is, if we were to wrap these all together, it's to be more engaged with the community by participating in X, Y, or Z.
More interactions, right?
Like, and, and to measure that, we would have to figure out what we're measuring. So if we're going to.
How many times did Colin show up?
Right.
So I, I don't want you to throw the web, the website thing off this, because it is part of the community engagement to have a functioning website, right? If somebody can't find, for example, the minutes of the planning board meeting last month that talked about rezoning on your website, then how do they get involved?
Or worse yet, the agenda.
On the agenda, right?
And a lot of committees apparently aren't posting their, their minutes in a timely manner.
It's not, well, that's true too.
Yeah, so that's something, that's a measurable thing we wanna ensure.
I found it interesting with Short Term Rental Advisory Committee, that I was sending in the minute, the agenda request, and it was being posted by the clerk's office, but yet people couldn't find it. Now, if you just did a Google search, you wouldn't find it, 'cause you'd go back to the first meeting, which was in June or whatever. And then, if you go to the website and go to boards and committees, and then search for that committee, then the link worked. So it's a functionality issue with the website itself.
Agreed. I have a lot of difficulty finding some, so.
I even did it myself, and I called the clerk's office, and I said, are you sure you posted that? Because I don't see it, and the meeting is coming up on Wednesday. She goes, it's definitely posted, I posted just what you put.
Well, what good is posting if people can't find it?
Well, that's what, but that's not her fault.
Yeah, no.
But she did tell me how to find it. She says, oh, don't go with the Google search, go to boards and committees within the website, and then the link will function.
You get a broader kind of a goal statement, so I'm just talking off, develop systems and practices that allow, do we use residents or the community? We don't use citizens.
Community.
Community to better engage with, with, with the town, capital T.
With the services.
I mean, there's, there's really two aspects to engagement, right? I mean, one is, people are doing this to simplify their, you know, their life, you know, paying bills, getting permits, you know, things like that. And the other is, you know, how does the community engage with, how do the select board in town engage with the community? It's kind of a two-way street, whereas the, you know, the, the first part is really just one way. Now, I wanna pay my bill, that's community engagement, but then the, the other part is the give and take that, you know, is between the select board.
There is a.
And it's, and it's, and it's residents.
There's a crossover, yeah.
So, we'll get some policies, like, select board shall dine in Falmouth restaurants once a week.
That's cool. So I'm gonna take yours a little step further, say, develop systems and practices that allow the community to, I just messed it up, but, develop systems and practices to simplify and streamline access to town services, you know, by community members. Like, if we develop those words and, and tweak them a little bit, to get there, we need to add all municipal services online by such and such, and we can have that, you know, be permitting the stickers, the bill pay. The next one down is improve the functionality of online resources, so people know where to find things, you know, and that's kind of a mile, that's a milestone that we can focus on, like, is, does that make sense, or is that not adding up?
Yeah, yeah, again, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with this distinction between the organization, you know, of how we effectively deliver services, right? Or allow people to access those information and services versus the public participation piece, like, an example, this room right now is not set up, and we get some, some critiques that, you know, we can't do hybrid meetings, right?
Right.
And, 'cause it's just not set up that way. So that's a public participation. Folks that are homebound, that can't come to a meeting, they can't interact, right? 'Cause FCTV records it.
Right.
And shoots it live, but you can't.
And it shoots it live, but you can't call in and ask a question.
And they're at home throwing their shoe at the camera.
So that, that's public participation, and, this is my struggle with this, and a little bit about how we successfully deliver services.
But we can't do it at the senior center, right? Is the senior center set up for hybrid?
I don't think, a little bit better than.
All it requires is granting access to the fiber network.
I agree, you're actually spot on. We're talking about organizational effectiveness to allow better part, public participation in one bucket, and the other bucket is community engagement, which is a little bit different of a, of a look and feel. Like, my job at HOE is Director of Community Engagement and Relation, Community Relations, right? So I think community engagement in this is more about community relations, which is, how do we improve community relations of town management and select board to ensure that we are addressing the needs of the community? And to that point, it could be, you know, we've got the civic course coming up, we've got the liaisons to village associations, dinner once a month. But like, these are all tactics, right, that we can measure and say, yeah, we're hearing you. We can go to cultural organizations, not just liaisons to village associations.
We can have lunch at the senior center.
Right. So I think community, we should change maybe community engagement to community relations. And then the organizational effectiveness and public participation that we are discussing right now is basically, how do we connect the services of town to the public, so that people can get what they need, right? 'Cause that's what, that's kind of the look and feel that we've been talking about, which is hybrid meetings. That is a way for public participation to engage with us, which is different than community relations. We're talking about the functionality of online to make it easier, better, more transparent. That is an organizational effectiveness and a public participation piece. Municipal services online, we've talked about this with the beach community, right? Getting the beach sticker online versus in-person, or, you know, we can pay bills, but, you know, streamlining those services to make them better and easier, you know, 'cause we still have a split in the population. There are some people that can do online, some people that need to come to the, to the offices here. But, you know, develop those systems and practices that do that, that's the high level, and here's how, and we're gonna improve these things, so we can kind of hold each other accountable. Same thing with the community relations, hold each other accountable, which is, we set a high-level goal of engage more, well, by such and such, by attending more, whatever. We can then, each time, and this goes to that calendar question, which is like, are we maintaining, are we going less?
I still think you're, you're, you're combining community, community engagement and organizational effectiveness.
Well, I think that's his point he's trying to make, is that they're all together in one.
Well, they don't have to be.
Okay.
All right, so you, you, community engagement, how, how does the community engage with you as a select board, or you as a town? How do they find out information? How do they know when meetings are gonna happen? How do they know what is on the town meeting warrant? How do they interact with you on a, how do they have access to you in more unstructured ways? Can, it's not about, how do I get a permit? It's about, how do I know what the town is doing? How do I know, how do I know what the town is considering that's gonna affect my life?
We need to increase our presence on social media, for one, because that's been very effective for the police department, fire department. Even the beach committee has been getting a lot of views and, you know, putting a lot of stuff out there. Maybe the select board should have a Facebook page. I don't know who, you know, we don't have people to manage these things.
That's the question.
And then, we can't unofficially, as a select board member.
We don't want one person saying something.
Right.
On behalf of the select board that may not be.
Because we might be focusing on a couple of things that we feel are important, but forgetting about other people's, things that they've noticed were important, and it becomes biased.
One of the things, to David's point, you know, how do we get information out? How do people learn about what's happening? You know, we've talked about that, and this is a very specific example, more of an objective or a, what we've put into place to accomplish the broad goal, but that community calendar, new platform that.
Yeah.
Basically draw, it's a, it's a software that basically puts all the information, allows people to subscribe to. If I wanna know about what's happening in, with regard to energy, they can literally subscribe to very specific areas. So that's a way, that's public engagement, public participation. They can select what information they wanna get, and this calendar's set up, so that it allows them to get just that information that they need, or want, I should say.
Some places do, do a newsletter, right? Monthly, they do a newsletter. You can sign up online to be on the list to receive the newsletter.
We do, we do, we do a newsletter of sorts, what's going on around town that gets posted on the website, but if people don't have access to the website, how do they, how, how does that enhancing public participation if people don't have access to the website, for whatever reason? You know, how do we, how are we getting that? How are we, how are we engaging with the community to allow them to participate in the process of town governments? You know, I mean, that's, I think that's what, that's the heart of this. And there's a lot of similarities and crossovers between the organizational effectiveness and this, but I'm, I'm just focusing on, again, I went to the preamble, and the, the term public participation was used. So I think that gets to the heart of the community engagement piece. How do we enhance and allow the public to participate more freely, more openly, more inclusively in, in our, in, in town government? I think the civic academy is an example of that. So implement a civic acad, but again, here's my confusion in, where I started going off path. Broad goal, and then those tasks and objectives to reach the broad goal. Civic academy is a task or an objective, right, to complete by a certain time, to reach this ultimate broad goal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
That's where I'm at. That's, and that's why I think I'm, I'm trying to like, look at the plan as it's currently structured, and it just doesn't fit that mold in my mind. And I'm trying, so I'm trying to force a square peg into a round hole a lot of times with regards to how this plan's
Okay. So, you're talking about public participation, all right, and you've got this Civic Academy. The Civic Academy is usually set up to educate people, right? It's not, it's more about, it's more about communication in their direction, not
True.
Communication from them to you, right?
That's true.
Although, you're gonna allow some of that, that some of that is gonna happen in the, but, so, to me, you, that is strategically, you strategically thinking, one of the things you want to do is improve the level of, I hate to use the word "education," but, because that has so many different connotations, but the, the level of knowledge among the general public about how town, how the town operates, or, right, you want to, you want to, you want to improve their knowledge level, their
And to encourage
Their understanding.
And, yes, that, and to encourage participation in boards and committees, right? We've got a bunch of vacancies, maybe people don't have an understanding. So, through education, we encourage more participation
Right.
In the process of joining a board or committee, right?
Right. So, yeah, so your, 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 your big headline is participation. Your strategic goal is education, because that will lead to a measurable goal, a, a, performance indicator of more people apply to be on boards and committees.
Less vacancies.
Yeah.
Less, fewer vacancies on boards and committees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Your, your, your headline is participation, your, your strategic goal is make it, to make it easier for the public to access information, right?
Not, is that, share their views?
Well, I think that's another one. But, you know, make it, make it easy to, to access information, because if they don't have the information, they don't know, they don't know what's happening. How do they, how do they know where it is that they want to participate, right? If, I don't, if I don't know that this planning board is gonna rezone half of Falmouth, if I haven't gotten that information, how do I know that that's an opportunity for me to get involved, right? Things like that. So, e, e, education, and then, the third piece is, how do you get their feedback? How do you get the involved, their involvement? Right? You want to improve that.
We need a, we need a page just for community comment, public comment page on the website. You know, "I don't like the, the new water meter rates. Why do you charge me so much?" I hear that on Facebook. Anybody get a water bill that's three times
Well, I mean, that would, that would be a system or practice, implement a system or a practice, having some type of a two-way communication, right, where people could, and maybe that's the
That's your social media.
We get emails from people and, you know, right?
Yeah, we struggle with
How we respond, I mean, and that's something we have on our future agenda, is developing, you know, that you've asked for Doug, you know, consistently, about a proper way for us to make sure we're responding in a timely manner, and, you know, and we, we tell them we've looked at it, "Thank you for your, you know, thank you for your comments," but we're really not, you know, giving them answers, you know. And I don't know what the best, what the best
Not consistently.
Precis, right, not consistently, and, and, and it's understandable. I mean, A, we may not really have a consensus opinion to be able to answer that particular question. The other thing is, you're flooded with all the other things that you're doing, and, you know, we're all getting, getting email. I'm not sure, you know, a Facebook page is the, is the best way to do it, but something, some coordinated way to, you know, let people know the, you know, what's going on, and, and that their concerns are being looked at anyway, if not immediately addressed, at least we're, you know, thinking about.
Well, you're starting up the select board review, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, I think that's been a really, you know, good, you know, a good way, you know, what we're doing on FCTV, Mike, Mike and I doing that, you know, program after our select board meetings. You know, we've been doing it every, you know, other week, you know, kind of commensurate with the select board meeting, and just kind of recapping.
How long you been doing that?
We started, I think, what, we've done four? The first one was so bad that it never saw the light of day. We've gotten a little bit better, and we've done three. We just did one, you know, one the other day. I mean, we could do that every week, and, you know, and, and other select board members
I didn't even know you were doing it, honestly. Talk about lack of engagement.
Well, it hasn't really been advertised. Colin certainly knows we were doing it.
It is one way now, but the plan is to have people call in, right, live, ask questions. So, that'll be a
Okay.
Public participation, right? But, again, I'm trying to focus in on the buzzwords that we use, the keywords, I should say. The original intent, who, when they develop this, this, this priority area, community engagement, what are we looking at? Public participation keeps coming to my mind, right?
Yeah.
So, how do we, two-way communication. We listen to what the concerns are, allow them to participate, give us information, and how we, how we get information out to them, right? That's the two-way.
I can go back to the FCTV, giving them access to our fiber network. I know it's in the past been previously considered a security risk, allowing them to have access, but it seems to me that it certainly could be done. And they would be eager to go to an internet-based system rather than a cable TV-based system. That would facilitate the hybrid meetings. That would go a long way to helping people get online, because a lot of people don't have, they don't understand how to go get FCTV online, for one. And, you know, you have to go to YouTube, then watch the old ones, or you go to the FCTV.org, and you can select live, you know, but it's tricky, and you don't just intuitively think how to do it.
And even having done it myself, FCTV is not easy to navigate either, to figure out. Well, it might be government, but it might be over
Public access.
And you click on something that says, "Fund me."
Right. Love FCTV, just for the record. But, one thing that I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to rapidly capture what we're talking about here. And so, at a high level, we've really discussed the complexity and interrelatedness of the topics that are currently in Section Six, which is organizational effectiveness, effectiveness and community engagement. And that ranges from, how do we get our bills paid and permits made versus access to services and meetings for participatory, participatory governance versus community relations? Because we're kind of all talking about these big three buckets, right? So, if we were to kind of separate those out, organizational effectiveness and public participation flows into, how do we develop systems and practices to simplify and streamline access to town services and information? And we've talked about, how do we get municipal services online as a milestone, like, by such and such, or the functionality, adding functionality of online access to, or improve functionality of online access to information? How do we add hybrid meetings to broaden accessibility to meetings, right?
That's granting the access to FCTV.
Right. But that, our, our job is to set the big goal. How that happens is then done by the town, because they might find that there's a different way than that one. And then, adding a community calendar to this. But then, to the other part of the discussion is, you know, and I think we still need to develop a high-level statement for how we are going to engage with the community. But, you know, what are the ways that we can improve to share views and questions and comments and concerns? To build trust, I think, is what we're trying to, to do here. Or, you know, there's some reason for doing it, and we need to have that. And then, to do that, we then, kind of, we've talked about different things, like the Civic Academy, educate folks, the liaisons to village associations and cultural committees, the increasing the presence of social media, develop a communication protocol to answer questions from community developments. Those are all tasks or tactics, but the overall thing is, that we're kind of working on is, is that overlap between organizational effectiveness to improve public participation, but then, the other piece is community relations and community engagement, which is a little similar, but a little different field. Is that, did I capture that?
Yeah, I think you did a very good job
Okay.
Of capturing that.
Because it's complex. It's not easy.
Do we have the information to add back into, into the template that David's
Right.
Going together.
Yeah, just Well, I mean, a lot of these things are pretty easy to tick off. I mean, have Juneteenth celebration, have a International Day of Disability. I mean, these are all pretty, you know
Bring back the potluck
Bring back the potluck.
At the Falmouth Harbor Yacht Club, which we used to
I mean, I didn't know we were holding two community engagement forums a, a, a year. I mean
We had been.
We, we, we have, because they've been
Go, go, change everything, but we can get back to it.
They've been, they've been issue-specific engagement forums that we've had with the police station and ICE, you know, or at least thinking about ICE. But, we haven't had these, you know, just as a general, twice a year, you know, everybody come together and let's chat, I mean, which I guess was what they wanted to do.
Just count those, those specific ones, as, as counting in your two, right?
Well, then, we're, you know, we're probably
You can do four or five if, you know, if you want to, but, you know, in local government, people, people come out to a meeting for a reason, right? They, they're gonna come because the issue that you're talking about
They have, they have a stake in that particular issue.
They have a stake. If you're two, you, you have a general one, you know, some people are gonna come, but, you know, you, you might be disappointed in how many
You know, people tend to be more reactionary to things that are concerning, that are troubling them, rather than things they're happy about. So, if we can identify things that are maybe our most controversial subjects and our most challenging issues, and have forums on those, we'll get more turnout. And we might not like what we hear, but that's, that's, that's where you're really engaging, the people that need to be engaged. So, we have to think in terms of what is our, what's our biggest challenge? Like, what, coming up soon is likely to be staffing for the police department, because it's gonna likely include a tax increase, and we might have to have community engagement on it.
Well, I think the community engagement is, you know, are we gonna have to increase our taxes?
There you go.
And how are we gonna go about it, whether it's the cops, or, you know, wastewater, or, or schools? I mean, whatever it is, the, the engagement is, you know, you know, we're at a bit of a tipping point, you know, with respect to our current situation. That might require, you know, some extra special things to happen.
True, but I don't think it, I don't think we would, we're going a little off-topic here, but it's about engagement. I don't think it, the best way to do it would be, generally speaking, we need more money. I think we need to identify specifically what we need money for.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Just like when you're fundraising, if you have a specific thing that you're raising funds for, you're much more effective than just, "Hey, give me some money."
Yeah, but, but a lot of people don't know, how do we get to that point? You know, okay, we need more money, but
Identify the need.
Identify the need, and then, what are the steps to, to address it? What are the possible options we're looking at?
You gotta build your
Next year, three years down the road, five years down the road, and, and so forth.
But it does have to be connected to very specific
Yeah.
Right.
So, I think we're, we're good here. I, Colin, you'll
Well, we completely obliterated this.
I, I have notes, you have notes. You know, part of this process is after next, after the next session, right, we're gonna go through, we're gonna go through these again with an eye towards further refining and adding new things. But, after that's done, I'm gonna give you something in writing that you can react to.
So, the goal is increase community engagement.
This is what we talked about, this is, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Right? That's the goal.
The goal is
Increase community engagement. I mean, we've gone around and around to try to make a goal out of it. It's just, I mean, in a nutshell, that's it. And then, there's several different little milestones, like, how long will it take before we can give FCTV access to the fiber-based network that we have here? We'd have to figure that out and put a number on it. How long before we can increase, you know, improve the website with a major overhaul? That, we'll see when the contract is up and put a date on it.
The, yeah.
Well, you know, you might have a strategic goal that says to get the, the cable on the on the
What is it you're trying to achieve?
Yeah.
Right?
And why is it important?
A milestone to that
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. A milestone to achieving that would be, one, identify the barriers for doing that, right? We want to know, what, what are the barriers?
Is there a security issue?
The barriers are in 60 days.
Their cost issue, right?
So, yeah.
The, the comment I was making, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I, I, I'm trying to look at this, you know, what, from the select board's shoes, what is it we're trying to achieve, and why is it important?
Right. So, let's build on what Doug just said. We want to increase community engagement. We need to add the "why."
In order to, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we want to increase in order to
We have a, a type of town meeting government that's super-dependent on civic participation. If our community doesn't stay engaged, our system of government can't function. You know, we'll, if we let everyone just fall away and become disengaged, we're gonna have to go to a mayoral system and professional staff.
Yeah, even at that, you still need, you still need an informed electorate in order to operate a democracy.
But to
You know, that's
To go back to this, I think these are just
National
Yeah. A majority of these are tactics. They're not actually goals. They're milestones and tactics that achieve the overall goal to where you're thinking, which is, and I think, we, as a board, when we report out, our, everything is, the next time we come together, our job will be to develop a high-level statement for why we need community engagement.
Well, I just said, I need a highly-engaged
Yes.
Civic
Civic participatory
Yeah.
Government, yeah. And then, with that, you know, here's our strategies for how we're gonna do that, and each strategy has some specific tactics. So, if we're talking about organizational effectiveness, going back to the first one
No, we can't talk about that. That's the, that's the other group.
It was
You can talk about, I guess
But it was, but we carved it out at the beginning
We actually clocked with something
Those guys are supposedly talking about
We did get into it, though.
No, we did, because there is an overlap
Systems and processes, right?
There is an overlap.
Yeah.
Well, do we agree on what I said about, you know, maintaining engagement is important because of the, the need for
That speaks exactly to why it's important.
Right.
Yeah. That was what he was asking for. What do we want to achieve, and why is it important that we achieve it? Yeah, that does speak to why it's important. Are we doing that right?
So, I think we can move on to the next round.
All right.
Colin, you're moving this time. You're gonna switch with Heather.
Okay.
I think at that point, everybody will have been in a different
Before I lose these notes, I'm gonna do a little save as.
Yeah, please.
I didn't do that yet.
I think we could put the heat up a little bit.
Yeah, that's what I mean. The dryer is becoming cold there.
All right. I need another cup of coffee.
You know, I've got a new heating system put in my house a few months ago, and the installer suggested I put the thermostat on automatic.
Yeah.
It could either heat or cool, whatever's required.
Based of what it needs, yeah.
But it just kept going on and putting the heat on, and then it got too warm, and then the air conditioning came on, and I was like, wait a minute.
Constant electricity.
Yeah, it's like, bounced like a ping-pong ball. I said, no way.
Seventy-one. Sometimes I don't have any confidence in
Is it automatic, like, what I was just saying, though? Does it go on from heat to AC?
If you, there's a mode setting on auto, or you can force it to stay on heat.
Right.
So, you can cycle through the modes. There is an auto mode. I think that'll just
I don't know what that is helpful for.
No, it is not.
We have a central plant, and you have to go around to all the things, and, like, it's literally like, switch down is for summer, switch up is for winter.
Yeah.
And what, and Jack was saying it earlier, like, sometimes you have, you've switched it over to winter, but October or November has a really warm day, but the system's still like, "I need to pump heat." You're like, "No."
Then you just go to off.
You go to off.
There are sodas and water in the cooler, too, I didn't mention.
Oh, I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah.
Soda goes better with the potato juice.
Yeah, so I do have soda, water, and, oh, it's too late for the orange juice, but that's in there, too.
Which room am I going to?
Uh, the old water room, across from my
Into the hall to the right.
Next to my
Executive Session Room.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. You guys been having fun in here?
Oh, yeah.
Now you're in the We are. We've been going around
Oh, this is the cool room.
Down in circles.
How's the wa, how's the water reservoir, Bob? Is it needed refilling?
I have a question, but are the bathrooms the ones that are more private?
They are. And the one closest, the one, that's, that's the bathroom. The one closest to the, the main door is the men's room.
The one on the right, if you're looking at the both, is men's.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you very much.
I know, the secret bathrooms.
Peter explained that to me.
I walked in once to the ladies' room. I was quite embarrassed.
It was during COVID that they took the, the men's and women's off, and it's caused, it's caused issues.
Maybe we should put the men's and ladies' signs back, even though it's
Well, that causes some issues, too, so
Yeah.
Who's coming down my way?
Oh, was I supposed to
You guys still, you guys still
Okay.
You stay
I'm leaving again. I'll never talk to Doug again.
Aww.
I'll be right back.
We'll have our own strategy, Jack.
Coastal and natural resources.
Oh, boy.
Good, good. Yeah, I think we're making progress, too. All right, I'm gonna go down to that group, we'll, so, yeah.
You are Scrivener?
Coastal, natural resources here.
Will you be our Scrivener for this one?
Water, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I haven't been doing a very good job of mapping the other room.
You're doing a lot better than I am.
Just filling in the chart?
You're kind of taking notes a little bit. Mike, they were asking
Mike, they were asking for you down the other room, they're saying, I thought he was going to wrong.
Yeah, that was the plan, and then I.
And I screwed that up.
Ideas.
My thought.
That was my plan to rotate, yeah.
That's all right, that room has good momentum.
What number is this?
Five.
Five.
Okay. So Coastal and Natural Resources has a number of goals in the current plan. Find it here. Okay. There are seven goals that have been articulated previously. Develop a plan to prioritize and protect public infrastructure and inform private development. Coastal Resiliency Specialists will evaluate the surf, the surf drive adaptation pathways outlined in Coastal Resiliency Planning for Surf Drive Report and Prepare Recommendations. Okay. Review, discuss, and adopt Coastal Resiliency Action Plan on recommendation of the Coastal Resiliency Committee. Develop beach improvements in a ten-year beach management plan. Prioritize for repairs to aging coastal structures such as docks, ramps, retaining structures. Prioritize, plan, manage needs of non-waterways coastal structures such as parking areas, bridges, bikeways, trunk, river, sewer, et cetera. And finally, explore policy modeled after Chatham to require recurring beach nourishment to.
To approve structures, like revetments and any coastal structure.
Okay.
That was just something I learned while I was working with the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee that we had formed.
Okay, so any of these goals.
Does the Coastal Action Committee still exist?
No.
No, it doesn't.
They have a limited term.
Well, it was respect to the report that Charlie McCarthy was, Charlie McCafferty was the chair of, right? That report that was issued back in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two.
So that was the, it was a misunderstanding, I think, on the charge. Because we already had two reports, and we specifically named that committee the Action Committee because we didn't want another report. We wanted them to.
Wanted action.
Use the existing reports that we had and implement action in collaboration with the Beach Committee and the DPW. We wanted them to task themselves with some projects, but the, instead, did another report. So it was a misunderstanding, I, I just couldn't understand what happened, but, and then we chose not to renew the committee because it wasn't working as intended. So then we went back to let the DPW do it. Let's hire a coastal resiliency specialist and put him in with the DPW, and that will create the actions.
So we shouldn't really be keeping.
I mean.
The way this is worded, I mean, it's.
Honestly, all seven of these are, to some degree.
Antiquated.
Out of date or irrelevant.
Yeah.
Okay.
To put it bluntly.
All right, that's what I want to hear.
And then what happened next was we were in a kind of a holding pattern, waiting to hire a coastal resiliency specialist, which now we have. And that person is focusing, I believe, on town infrastructure first, prioritizing, right?
So, um, so the resiliency specialist is currently looking at recommendations to implement the surf drive plan.
Yeah.
I think, actually, the next meeting, I think you're going to hear that, some of those recommendations.
Right.
So it, 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 some of it's focused on, on infrastructure, Doug, to your points. But I think it's a broader, a broader approach as well. Looking at implementing one or more of the recommendations, or variations of the recommendations of the, of the, of the study, the feasibility study.
Yeah, I guess I would say combining NR2, maybe it's also NR3. But we need to adopt and implement an adaptive management plan for surf drive. All right, we've got.
Is there an adaptive management plan existing that you can adopt?
Well, but there's, seems to be a bit of a consensus on, between the resiliency, the beach committee, and the DEP, or the CZM, Coastal Zone Management, on what might be possible over there.
There's this, which.
There's a couple of different things, right?
There's, right, which.
Which together.
Sets out decision pathways, but then we've actually got a new report that's due, that we're supposed to hear in December.
Yeah, the, the, this.
With some near term.
Yes, and it talks about the feasibility and pract, feasibility of different beach nourishment, dew nourishment options. And it talks about pathway, pathways, Heather, is that the correct term? In terms of, you know, managed retreats from, from this coastal roadway surf drive versus.
Which honestly is, I'm trying to write, the dynamic adaption, adaptation pathways that are in this initial study that we never formally adopted. But basically, what this new report says is, we've already hit one of those decision points, and we're making that decision, right? Where nourishment is no longer feasible, we're facing loss of the road, we're going to need to, we are at one of the forks in the decision pathway.
What, what about the recommendation of the committee with respect to the other parts of town that they addressed, which have never been looked at, right? I mean, all that's really been looked at is surf drive and the, you know, problems, because that's the biggest and most immediate. But the, the, the group had recommendations with respect to other areas of town, which had never really been looked at very closely. Am I correct?
Also, Resilient, Resilient Woods Hole has looked at, has looked at the Woods Hole area specifically, right? And done that study.
Yeah, but that wasn't, I mean, it was a town assisted, and you guys had worked very well with them, and they made a point of mentioning that. But I mean, there are other areas, Manant and, you know, and Falmouth Heights, and, you know, you know, those areas are at risk as well, but, you know, we're not really doing much with, with respect to what the original group recommended. Am I not, am I correct, Doug?
Well.
I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot.
We have, we have an engineering design which calls for the creation of a couple of structures to keep the beach sand on the beach rather than drifting back into the channel. We're going to widen that channel to get more flushing in Born's Pond. This is Manant.
Sorry.
This is at Manant.
Manant.
Yeah, yeah, and so we were actually at odds with the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, who recommended not putting any more structure anywhere, pretty much ever. And so I had to speak at town meeting in favor of supporting the professional engineers' design and keeping the ball moving, which ended up with the failure of the Corps of Engineers to approve our plans. That, we never did rebuild the bridge. We haven't done the widening yet. It's been, what, eleven years? And the costs are skyrocketing, making the project in jeopardy now. Anyway, it was just a, an argument on philosophy between some structures, some, in some places where I feel like it's needed, versus just no structure anywhere.
I mean, I think this is what, so, this is the dynamic adaptation pathways for surf drive that that report generated. We are here, trying to do beach nourishment and restoration, facing the fact that we're going to lose part of the road, right? But we never formally adopted this as our management plan. So I think we need to make it a goal to, for surf drive, where we've been doing these studies, formally adopt our, our management strategy, our philosophy, right? This is, this is the pathway, this is how we're going to make decisions moving forward, this is where we are in the plan, and actually adopt that. And then we need to develop it for all thirteen total areas, right? That were identified.
The study included all those.
No, this is only, this is only surf drive.
Yeah.
Right, the first coastal resiliency, well, crack, their first report.
I guess my, my point was that we've got to look at the other parts of town as well. And that needs to be part of our, our goal, you know, and, and a measurable goal, you know, because there are problems, you know.
Well, I think that's developed.
Throughout, yeah. So, just what you said.
Resilience plans, adaptation plans for all thirteen areas.
Yeah.
And then formally adopt and, and begin implementing.
But I agree with you on the, you know, the need for that, but also more specifically on surf drive. We might have to have a limited timeframe for any, say, say, for instance, we choose the nourishment, the limited nourishment, which is my feeling, is keep the road both ways with limited nourishment, and just say that this is, life expectancy of this policy is a certain number of years, maybe only ten or twelve or whatever.
That's exactly what this adaptation pathways are, right? You do, you do, you do one thing until it doesn't work anymore, and so, but this gives us that framework that we need to actually adopt.
Exactly, so adopting this, this existing plan is, is one.
It is retreat.
So.
Yeah.
Retreat.
Which, which I think is, is actually the, is kind of.
It's between two and three.
NR2 and NR3, right? The board was hesitant to adopt this policy approach without having our coastal resilience coordinator on staff.
Exactly.
And so we now have a coastal resilience coordinator, so we need to come back and actually review and adopt the surf drive resiliency plan.
Okay.
Exactly.
Is that a strategic goal?
Right?
No.
Okay, so the strategic goal, you need, you, I, I'm hearing you need a coastal resiliency action plan for the entire town, for, by the entire coast.
We do have a vulnerability assessment.
We have an overall, yeah, and a vulnerability, what we need is actually thirteen specific manage, like.
Like what we have for surf drive, we need it for all the other areas.
You need to prioritize those thirteen areas.
That's true, but event, but we need a decision-making framework and plan for each of the thirteen areas.
They're unique.
That's going to take us, yeah, that's going to take us a while.
Because some areas, maybe. Some areas maybe just revert to natural process.
Whatever, right, they're all going to have potentially different.
What are the thirteen areas called? What do you, what do you refer, thirteen?
Littoral sections or something?
What do they call them? Coastal.
Neighborhoods?
Coastal, coastal regions. The thing is, we now also have the state overlay that we need to evaluate, but. What do they call them? Ha ha. They just call them thirteen sections, thirteen sectors?
All right, thirteen sectors identified in, you know, what are, what, what, what are they, what, what document are they identifying?
Coastal Resiliency Action Plan, is that it?
Yeah, the thirteen coastal sectors identified by the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee.
Okay.
The one thing the committee did do in their report, which was very important and shouldn't be overlooked, is that they, they didn't just replicate the previous reports, which focused mostly on geologic and coastal systems, but they, they went into the public policy realm and gave direction to where the Select Board and Planning Board need to start leaning people towards understanding and creating, like, what's that? Transfer development rights, if that has an implication, maybe somebody who has a house in Woods Hole that's going to lose their property to flood zones, maybe there's a place for them to go. Things yet we haven't yet explored, but there's some pub, public policy implications that they did, a raise up that is new, that is important, that shouldn't be overlooked.
So if that's, put a pin in that one for a second. So that plan that you, that committee report, Resiliency Action Committee report, right? Recommends that, has identified these thirteen areas and is recommending that there be a action plan developed for each of the thirteen areas. Okay.
And we basically started on one.
Yeah, and we've done that, we've.
And you've done one.
We've done the one, the surf drive.
Yep.
More specifically, a policy plan, because not all of the recommendations are for action.
Okay.
I hesitate to call it a management plan because further down here, NR4, we have a beach management plan, and that is a very specific regulatory term with the state, and a very specific document that we need to be updating this year. And that's, so, making sure in whatever terminology we use, what we're definite, what we're basically getting at is, is like, long-term management plans, but I don't want to screw up the terminology there.
So you want a management plan for each of the thirteen?
Well, is it, so is this accurate terminology, the Coastal Resiliency Action Plan? We have surf drive, right? And you're saying there's thirteen sectors.
So we basically need a, a resiliency plan for each of the thirteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So twelve addition.
Remaining twelve.
Because you're right, the beach management plan is significantly different than the resiliency action plan. Yeah, right.
Okay, so you need this action plan for each of the thirteen areas.
Well, I think we, we, we need to implement, right? Basically, the one for surf drive or evaluate.
I was hesitant to, to agree a hundred percent with the recommendations of the committee.
So maybe evaluate and possibly implement, or evaluate and consider implementing.
Now we're talking about surf drive, right?
Right.
No, well, I'm talking about the overall tone of the document.
We're not, I mean, we haven't talked about adopting, I think, the overall crack report. It's simply one of those recommendations that we're taking on as a goal, which is that each of the thirteen areas needs a resiliency plan.
Okay, thank you.
Right, right, okay, that's, I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah.
So you're, each of those need a resiliency plan. So your, your strategic goal is to improve coastal resiliency in, in the town of Falmouth.
Address the threat.
Address, right, whatever.
Assess and address.
Assess and address, whatever, whatever that is. And one of your actions, one of your milestones is initiating a planning process, right? You're really, you're, you're trying to initiate a process to develop these plans.
I would say it's to prioritize the, the list, like, we prioritize surf drive first, because it's closest to town, and we felt like it was at great risk. We know Manant is at similar risk, but it's less inhabited.
Okay.
And so even though there was a half a plan for Manant, because it involved our water improvement, our water quality improvement, the main objective with the Manant plan was to widen the inlet, to increase flushing and improve the quality of the water there. But in a sense, that also translated to a coastal resiliency project, because it's involved the structure of the grines and the management aspects of that beach.
All right, so, so now we're talking about prioritizing these remaining twelve areas. Do we have, do you have, do you feel you have enough information to prioritize?
No. We've been on hold, and we've been giving our coastal resiliency specialist time to get settled in and get a feel for the town.
We just filled that position not long ago. So, so I think that's kind of the way.
We didn't want to put them on the spot in the first week.
Of that coastal resiliency specialist, right? Is to, is to assess the risks and threats and then prioritize, I, I feel.
Do you need the management plan before you can assess the priority, is my question?
No.
No, I think the prioritization, because each of these, at least for surf drive, developing, we're talking about developing twelve more resiliency plans, each of which is likely to take two-ish years and.
And who knows how long the fund base will work.
A quarter of a million in grants?
Yeah, it was, yes.
Right, so they're, like, we're not going to do all twelve next year.
Okay.
Surf drive was chosen because it presented the, the highest threat and, and, and most vulnerability, right?
But I just want to kind of.
Strategically, strategically thinking, you know you have these thirteen areas that need to be managed in some way. Are you willing, do you think it's appropriate for it to take twenty-six years to have, stand up, to have thirteen plans in place? You need to do it faster than that, right? So that's what I'm trying to get at, is the timeframe. When do you want to have your, all thirteen plans in, in place? Realizing that they're going, you know, you, you might, surf drive, you might be implementing some of the recommendations before you get even the next management plan for the next area. area.
We might sign off on that one at our next meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think we gotta, you know, there's, there's two buckets here, there's Surf Drive, which is far along in the, in the process, and we're about ready to say, okay, this is direction that should go, and then the other twelve are, you know, the next, the next task of Josh or, you know, and, and the board. And, you know, I, I mean, to your point, I mean, I don't think it's gonna, you know, like you said, some of them may require, there's nothing we're gonna do, we don't need to wait two years to be able to say, you know, we're not gonna do anything.
And that'll be part of the prioritizing, because we might just say, like in Falmouth Heights Beach, we're not losing any sand.
So we could say within five years, I mean, I, I think that's a measurable, you know.
Yeah, I think we need.
A measurable goal. To say within five years, we've, you know, reviewed, assessed, and, and implemented any recommendations out of the coastal action report.
It's true, because we're probably really only gonna take serious action on a few sections.
That's right, and, and the other ones.
Maybe it'll be Chapakoi and that west side, there might be something we can do over there, some nourishment.
I would think we could do it in five years.
So I understand, we, we don't, to my knowledge, we don't have, the only action plan that we have developed is the one that hasn't even been adopted yet, and that is this Surf Drive plan, right? Heather, is that, that's the document you said that was never officially adopted?
Yeah.
My point is, you said within five years, we don't, we don't have plans for the other twelve sec, sectors.
We have the overall report, right? I mean, the overall recommendation.
We have the vulnerability assessment.
The vulnerability assessment.
We can go back, and we can read the, the latest report from the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, I mean, cause it's our most recent document, and it's, it's pretty thorough, so that should be what we work from, and we can look at the vulnerability assessment, and then we can have Mr. McConity, and we could have our new coastal resiliency specialist come in here and say, in our opinion, this is where we see the priorities, and then we can either agree or disagree.
Okay, so, so based upon that vulnerability report assessment, the coastal resiliency specialist will be able to prioritize the remaining twelve sectors.
Yeah, I would say report, but I meant the.
And then say within five years, the top three, the highest or most vulnerable sectors would be completed, I'm trying to, we got twelve sectors to go.
Realistically, yeah.
If they take a year or two.
How long, yeah, how long has it taken you to get to the point you are right now with Surf Drive?
Two years, since, since the beach committee took the initiative.
Right, so what makes you think it's gonna take less than two years to do the next one?
Because as we said, some of them don't really need any action.
Not, but the one that does need action, there's gonna be another one that needs action, at least one more, how, why makes you think it's not gonna take two years to get that one done?
But I think whether or not it needs action doesn't determine how quickly the study happens. The study is to determine whether action is, what actions might be appropriate, right? And so, I, I think you're right, it's gonna take the same amount of time to even get through three in five years, is gonna require that we're doing some concurrently.
Right.
And.
But those are done by consultants, so all we have to do is find the funding.
We gotta find the funding, so, and there's, so I think maybe one of the, whether it's a goal or a milestone for this committee, is to also develop a resourcing plan for this, for this work.
What about, so, are you gonna do, are you gonna plug in any kind of community outreach into this planning process?
Yes.
That's part of the, I mean, so for the Surf Drive plan to date, the consultant that has done that Woods Hole group is very good about building community engagement into their, the planning processes that they run. So I don't think it's community engagement about, I don't think there's community engagement, and this is my personal opinion, for this board to do about developing coastal resiliency plans. I think it's community engagement as part of the resiliency planning, does that make sense?
It does, so I see the community engagement piece, which is important, is a task, right? That is up under.
Yeah.
In my mind, as I'm listening to the conversation, we, we have one great study, Surf Drive, that needs to be adopted, we use that as a model, we've got twelve remaining sectors that need to be prioritized, so the coastal resiliency specialist is going to review the remaining twelve sectors and prioritize those based upon threat, vulnerability, right, impact, I don't know what the language, and, you know, within the next five years, have action plans, have action plans developed for three, the top three highest priority of the remaining twelve sectors, I'm not, does that make sense? I'm trying to be realistic with the.
Right, and I think that, that's different from what you said, Bob, you said five years, get it all done.
Well, I mean, I was being a little optimistic, because I don't think that much work, but then, you know, as we go forward, and, and in two years, when we develop a new plan, if we're making more progress, we can, we can change that goal, you know, to.
And admittedly, some of these are gonna require less effort than, than others, yeah?
So, so knowing what you know now, you think it's feasible, it's achievable, to, at the end of five years, have three more reports like the Surf Drive one?
I thought what Bob was saying was that we would have it all mapped out in five years, not that we're gonna have things complete.
I was just talking about getting a report done, getting three reports, or a report that addresses the top three priorities.
But I think we wanna address all twelve of them, but I think we need to have a metric of, you know, at least three, let's say, that we can see to fruition within this five-year period.
Yeah, I think that's what I do.
Plans to fruition, not implemented.
No, I'd like to have implementation.
Well, I mean, so the implement, I, I think there's a, the, the Surf Drive plan, right, the result of that, like I said, is a decision-making framework, it's these pathways, right? So to say that we're implementing that simply means that we are keeping an eye on Surf Drive and where we are in this pathway, and whether or not decisions need to be made or actions need to be taken, right? Implementation doesn't necessarily mean we are starting a project right now.
That we're gonna rip up the infrastructure and fully, fully retreat, we're gonna target it at nourishment, and, and I just had a discussion with a consultant.
There's an old adage, that says, goes something like this, the problem with planning is that oftentimes deteriorates into work, so, when, I mean, you, you have this action plan, and if implementing it doesn't mean doing actual work, what does it mean?
But it does, I mean, for the Surf Drive plan that we currently have in place.
Right now, we're, but, when that plan was first produced a few years ago, there was more of a question.
Yeah.
About where we were in there, and we thought we might have five years to watch and wait before we start to take this action, and then it gets to another point. The whole point is that with coastal resilience, it's not, it is an ongoing, long-term process of coastal change, and therefore, it's not an on-off switch of like, we're building a police station, it will be done in twenty-nine, and that process will be over, right? It's gonna be like, we could make a really dramatic decision to immediately retreat in two years in accordance with what we're gonna be facing in fifty years.
So given that.
But what we're choosing instead is an adaptive management plan, and so implementing is.
And it's also like playing football with the goalposts always moving, because the, the state really controls what we can do, with coastal zone management and DEP and all that. So when we had our study commissioned, we didn't know what our options would be, now that what we found out what the options are, it changes our parameters of what we're gonna implement.
So, I would say those, those options have also changed, and one reason why, I would say, I think, three in five years, as opposed to six years or longer, is realistic, is because the state has just put in place, is putting in place, both legislation and a number of new programs.
And funding.
Right, that involves funding, that they've gone through and characterized all of our coastal areas, and are providing a lot more resources and options, especially for towns like us, that we happen to have coastline that falls into two different regions, we have more coastline than any other town, right? So there's, there's more options, more support there than there was.
I think that's fair to say, it's given that, given that definition of implementation, then I, I agree, it's fair to say, five, you can do three of them within five years, three more, so you'd have a total of four in fiscal twenty thirty-one.
That's probably a good guess, but it's all it is.
But it is, you know, Nate, you know, you say the states control, nature's controlling the whole thing.
Yeah, and we're all, we're all.
Completely out of our.
Have a hurricane next year and a.
You know, it could change next year, if we have a hun, you know, a major, you know, category five hurricane.
Exactly, and they might just say, no more funding.
Yeah, and.
Right, I mean, and, again, with adaptive management, that still means we're implementing the plan, it just means we're at a different phase, we're at a different place on that pathway.
Things change again, we'll come back next year and adjust our plan again, like we do every year.
It's like a budget.
All right, so, however you wanna, however you wanted to, I'll put some, some language together about what the actual strategic goal is, but however you wanna define the goal, one of the milestones is adopting the, the Surf point, plan.
Yep.
But I think the overall, the overall focus goal or priority is, and I think as Doug said at the very beginning, assess and address the threat to, you know, our coastal resources, that's the overarching.
That's right, that, that's perfect.
That we wanna accomplish, right?
That's perfect, and so we, we assess and address, right, and one of the milestones is, is adopting this plan.
It's not so much adopting as choosing the path forward from the plan, they give us a variety of choices, abandon the road.
No, those are the, those are the choices that we face, it, like, adopting the plan, in my mind, means adopting that framework.
Yeah, we need to adopt.
And then we, and then when we get to those different decision points, we will be making decisions within that framework.
I think adopt is a more definitive action item for us, right?
But we still have to choose, do we wanna keep the road?
That's gonna be part of adopting, I mean, yeah, we're gonna go through the choosing.
If we eliminate the road, we can do more nourishment.
Yeah.
And, or if we keep the road, we do limited nourishment, and.
Right, but that, that decision-making, confronting that specific decision is part of implementing an adaptive management plan.
Right, and if you haven't adopted, if you haven't, if you haven't adopted the framework, then you can't, you're never gonna get to.
Oh, I thought we did adopt the framework, and that's why they gave us the choices.
We never actually adopted that framework, or like, kind of accepted the report or adopted that framework.
Well, then maybe we need to do that.
But mother nature put us at the point where we have to make the decision.
Right, so there, there's milestone one, milestone two is develop three more within, within five years.
Well, when they presented the report to the Select Board.
You would have, then your task would be.
Did we not acknowledge and thank them, and knew that we had to come back and make a decision?
I don't know, who was on, I wasn't on the board when it was presented, you were.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we need to, maybe the Select Board actually needs to take some, some action on that, you know, at a future meeting.
Well, again, we were just waiting for the coastal resiliency specialist to come in and give us his two cents to say, I agree with, you know, I think we were all.
Waiting.
Ready to make a decision, but yet respectfully hesitant, and I think that's the only thing.
All right, so I think, but now that Josh is on the, you know, on, on staff, we, we should probably hear what he has to say and formally adopt.
Yeah, and so I just wanna be, yeah, so I wanna be clear, you're gonna hear on December first, his recommendation off of the Surf Drive feasibility, right? Very specific, right?
Yep.
He's gonna come with recommendations, and I'll give you a sneak preview, it's like a targeted, right? Cause Heather's right, there's a decision pathway, if this, then that, you know, based on the current situation, targeted nourishment is going to be, I think, the recommendation you're gonna hear, you know, the other options are partial retreat, full retreat. I guess, to be clear, though, I wanna make sure that what Josh is going, the Coastal Resiliency Action Plan is not specific to Surf Drive, Surf Drive has its own completed resiliency action plan, right?
Right.
I wasn't, I wasn't around when that, when, when the, when the committee was putting these plans together, so I'm just trying to get a better understanding of kind of the hierarchy of the reports.
It's kinda a nomenclature thing, too, I think, is, is actually, you know, what we're talking about, plan and so forth.
Yep, so, so you've got enough for the, for the base goal.
Their, theirs was more of a report, yeah, as opposed to a plan.
That's, I was just looking at the front of it, yeah, it calls it a report, not a plan, it does have a number of recommendations, but it's not.
All right, anything else on this list that we need to wrap up?
That's the bottom line, I mean, honestly, I think, and I think that's a really good, you know, thing that we need to focus on.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, NR four, Mike, do you feel that, to some extent, the update, the ten-year beach management plan feels more like a task? I mean, it's required by the state that we update this thing, we're in the process of doing it, but does, is it helpful to still have that as a goal in there?
Again, so I don't, I think it fits up under a broader goal, I, I think this is more of a, of a, of an objective or task, we were having this discussion with some of the other groups, I, I don't think it, I don't think it hits the level of a, of a broad-based goal right now, in my mind.
Okay.
So what is the broad-based goal, though, that that fits under? What is your, what is your strategy, your strategy? It's the strategy of the town of Falmouth to, what?
Assess and address the threats of sea level rise and.
I would just, I wouldn't even say sea, I'd just say, assess and address the threats to our coastal resources, the town's coastal resources, I'm just, you know, it could be sea level, it could just be climate change, it could be any number of, you know, Heather knows the right words.
I mean, so, right, so I, I agree with you, but, so maybe, we, I don't think we necessarily need to specify what those thresholds, the beach management plan, in my mind, is a little bit different than the adaptive management, those resiliency plans, in that what the management plan actually gives us is not anything proscriptive, it is what are the tools that we have available to us? What are the things that we are allowed and able and willing to do on our beaches?
And state mandated.
And it's state mandated, and it's approved by the state, right? It's like, in these areas, you can do these things, it does not commit us to doing those things, it doesn't say you should or that you must, and so, in my mind, the goal there is almost more of a ensuring, the, that we have the greatest diversity of tools available to us to manage these, these threats, right? This, this beach management plan says, these are all the things that you can and are able to do.
You, you, but you, you're talking about a beach, I think we've, we've put the coastal resiliency thing to bed, I've got enough to work on, and now we're talking about beach improvements, ten-year beach management plan, that is not necessarily the same thing as coastal resiliency, that's.
So the beach management plan, I think, is linked to coastal resiliency as well as to improvements.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's what's, and Mike, jump in here if you have a different understanding, but, but the way Josh and, who was the other person that came to the beach committee to talk about this, it basically is, it's our toolbox, it is the toolbox we have available to us based on agreement between us and the, the state.
But you wanna, you, you wanna, you wanna basically improve the utility of the beaches?
Yeah, we wanna keep them.
Yeah, well, you want, you, right, you wanna maintain.
I mean, so, I guess I would say, develop beach improvements, and, oh, and our five, six, and seven, to me, are a different thing than the beach management plan, which, again, is this just kind of, it is a state mandated document that we have to have, that says, these are all the different things you're allowed to do on these beaches.
Yeah, and coastal resiliency doesn't just pay attention to the town-owned beaches, it pays attention to the whole coast, and all the homes that are along it.
The other part of this, that's not the coastal resilience, is, the goal is to ensure a, or to provide a world-class beach experience for residents and visitors, and the milestones under that are making sure that we have parking lots and bridges and ramps and whatevers that are not only not crumbling, but that we are really.
And grooming and nourishing.
So you're saying there's a second, a second goal?
As a second goal, and I feel like, that kind of, it, it's, it's wrapping up a lot of the things from four through seven, right? But it's about.
Yep, yes.
Say that again.
I like tying it into that whole experience.
Providing a world-class beach experience for residents and visitors.
Exactly, that's very well said.
And to do that, we're gonna need all of this capital planning and stuff.
Okay. All right, so.
That's a good call.
That's your strategic, so you, so I think we've gotten, made great progress here, we really defined two overarching strategic goals.
But at the end of the day, we've really thrown out what was in the strategic plan originally.
But we're gonna incorporate some of these in as milestones.
Yeah, no, I didn't say, we're not gonna throw it out completely, but effectively, we, we're, we're on the way to, you know, going where I think we wanna go with strategic plan.
In this one in particular, I think you've done a really good job of moving away from the tasks to the strategy, right? You know, and, so I've got, I've got, I've got, I think I've got enough to work with. here.
Yeah, no, I think this was, this one was very good.
I think that, for this one, that's it.
That brings us to 1215, which was your next milestone.
It's time to all come together and agree on what we designed.
Yeah, now we have to call, come together and hear everybody's report.
Want me to go get them?
If you don't mind, that'd be great.
25 minutes. And.
Coffee was not as great as I thought it was.
I think the homework for next two weeks will be.
All of them, I just had too much coffee.
Think about what we talked about, think about any, anything you want to add, and, you know, we can.
Offer new goals?
Offer any new goals.
Are you going to be able to turn this back around relatively, because when, December 6th, we made again this on a.
At, at least in a, you know, a fairly rough draft form.
I think it'd be helpful for them to see that.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe that's what I'm going to be doing Thanksgiving.
We don't have a lot of time doing it.
That's okay.
Just make sure I have that, that's.
Yeah, even if it's a rough outline.
December 6th, right, that's our next topic?
December 6th, yeah, yeah, I'll try to get you that by, you know, at least, at least three or four days before.
Where do we start? I'm just trying to put my notes together in some kind of a hearing.
When they call them passenger carrier, so that's what we're getting.
Do you get that?
Passenger carrier?
Not getting a minivan.
You're getting a minivan?
Getting a passenger carrier.
Call it what you like, let's see what it looks like.
And our kids were first that age, we were at the cutting edge of minivans, embarrassed to say.
Dodge caravan?
Dodge caravan, you know.
Panel?
Yeah.
Oh, they're the best.
I mean, you could just go full VW IED bus, I could, I so want one of those.
We, we have one electric, we want to.
Yeah, that's why I don't have one.
We have one full electric, and we just want to diversify for the time being until.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Bring us home.
45 minutes left, I may be willing to go longer.
I've got a kind of a hard stop at one, I've got commitment in Pianus by around two, so.
So there were six discussions, so if we do five minutes on each one, it'll be 30 minutes, let's try to aim for that, that'll give us a few, few minutes for, so I, I think I want to start with the last, the last round first, we'll go, we'll go in first order. Let's start with the management coastal and natural resources group.
Oh, we, we didn't choose anybody.
Didn't choose anybody, but I don't know, Heather, do you want to adopt or?
Well, I think we, you know, we started with the, the overall goal to be to assess and address the threat to, you know, our coastal resources, and from that, we basically developed, I think, two very specific action items, one dealing with, with the climate action report that was put together back in 2021 or 2022, and working off that, the, the surf drive report in particular, surf drive plan, and then, and then secondarily, we were talking about the, Heather helped me here, the beach management and, and.
Well, let's start with the bigger, bigger overall goal, that we agreed that we need to address the 13 areas that have been identified in the report.
Right.
And we need to come up with an action plan, and prioritize a few of the sections that we feel are most important and have that, those reports ready within a few years. In five years, we should have the whole thing basically laid out as a roadmap, what we're going to do on coastal resiliency, I think that's the bigger part.
Well, yeah, to, to try and look at all of the remaining 12 neighborhoods that were identified in the report, and prioritize, within that report, the, the ones that are most, you know, imminently problematic, maybe that's three neighborhoods, and then try to deal with them within a five-year period of time, I think, that's where we, that's where we kind of landed, and then, but we also talked about beach improvement, and, and why don't you talk?
A second, a second goal, provide world-class beach experience for residents and visitors. We didn't get very far into what the milestones for that would be, but broadly incorporating a lot of the kind of capital planning and some of the other goals that were, were already in that section around planning for infrastructure, improvising here, but I think things like our.
Parking lot areas.
Parking lot areas, I think are things like our food trucks and, and those sorts of things would all end up being under that world-class beach experience.
And I think that, that makes the point that we kind of separated out the beach management plan, even though it's under the umbrella of coastal resiliency, it's a separate management plan, it's kind of got its own aspects, rather than just the broader coastal resiliency threat.
You know, and I think over the past, you know, year or two that I've been on the select board, I think we've kind of lost focus on really the coast and, and what we need to do there to, because we've been dealing with all of these other issues and housing and, you know, wastewater and, and all of that, I think we need to refocus ourselves on this existential threat to the, to the town, which, you know, for, for the people who live in the neighborhoods, as well as for the people who are coming here, you know, for the experience of Falmouth, so I think it's really important that we, you know, grasp that.
And now we have the expertise, we have the coastal resiliency specialists on board, right, that will fill that position.
Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be able to fund the majority of the work that needs to be done, but it's good to at least know what's out there and try to make our way forward as best we can.
The state has, you know, has some, at least it's looking like the state, at least at this point, has money available and will make every effort to get some.
It'll be good to have plans in place to be ready to accept that, because if we don't, we won't get any.
Yeah, well, we've got, you know, we've got a couple of good representatives and a state senator that are going to help us do that, right, Jack?
Right, but, but there are steps that we need to take, and like, we have started to, but when, you know, a few years ago, we didn't even have the vulnerability assessment, we didn't have the, the basic footprint to accept those funds, and now we're in a better position.
So I think this, this group did a really good job, the intent of strategic planning is here, you took a list of, a laundry list of items that you want to accomplish, and you translated that into two overarching strategic goals, and then we'll, what we're going to do is take that and put together the milestones based on what's in your existing report, and you'll be able to look at that next time.
Okay.
Okay, but that, that's exactly, that was exactly the assignment, and, and you did well.
Interesting, I was not in that one. Derail it every time.
So let's talk about water, water conservation, wastewater, and solid waste management, that's a long, long list.
So long those goals, no, it was very interesting, high-level thought, how the two different groups operated, and it was interesting, so we actually reviewed each task to determine the completeness or appropriateness of each one, there were some that we clearly nixed, there was a bunch that we just cut out because they were not applicable or part of something else, I think, similar to what you all did, where you were able to roll them up to, to high-level things, I think that's the overall need, which is, the overall goals were not necessarily clear, but that they need to be improved and broadened so that we can frame it a little bit better, the under, the bigger thing that we're trying to attack that is measurable with a scale, but many of the things in there broke down into separate goals, which is improving quality of our inland ponds, of our coastal ponds, and to protect our water quality of sole source aquifer and/or surface water supply, and so from that, a lot of these tasks flow into that, because it is the CWMP, the discharge methods, those other things, those are, we, we felt kind of like the other activities, they were tasks and milestones that add into a bigger overall goal, we just need to better clearly define what the goal is, and we talked both in terms of wastewater, but also potable drinking water and the different water sources.
Stormwater.
And we didn't, we didn't add them for the sake of time, but there are very definitive scientific numbers, measures that we can add for the, for the goals, for the, for the tools portion.
So as we think about that, that dashboard, we can use those specific measurable things to see where we are in terms of the success, or if attention is needed on somewhere, because we see that, let's just say, nitrogen increases in said pond or whatever, although we know we need to invest in here to nudge it back down into the safe realm, so.
Any questions from the people who didn't, I should have done this the first time, any questions?
What are the goals?
So that's just one goal?
No, those, three.
Three, improve quality of inland ponds, improve quality of coastal ponds, we need the measurements and the dates, you know, to make it truly smart, but all these things kind of rolled up into that, improve quality of inland ponds, improve quality of coastal ponds, and protect our water quality of our sole source aquifer and surface water supply, and stormwater goes in there somewhere.
Stormwater's in there for all of those.
Yeah, I mean, stormwater kind of goes through all, all of those, it impacts, yeah.
The dilemma on that one was, it was, I think we started with, I think we were 14 or 15 goals, right?
Yeah, it's a lot.
And so we kind of struck certain goals that we felt that were no longer relevant or were really subservient to the four, four goals that we just mentioned, and I, so the idea was, what is trying to be accomplished in this category, it's all about water quality in one way, shape, and form, and, you know, Falmouth has this distinction because of the geology of the area of different ponds and coastal ponds, so make sure and maintain that distinction in these different things, differently, I want that, and different people. So it really was to reorient this category to the broader charge of improving water quality as a general proposition, with, you know, kind of those distinctions we just mentioned, and then it makes sense that you've got to have a stormwater management plan, which is subservient in all, whole, the stormwater management plan, improve water quality.
And then we got to the very end, and number 15 was suddenly a very smart goal, where it was like, develop water conservation programs designed to reduce water consumption by 10% by FY '27, and we're like, wow, where did that come from? Awesome, so that can lead by example of where we need to get to for the overarching goals.
So you really just defined the, the main goal, but then the items remain the same?
We have the three goals, but we need to work on the words and the measures.
And to work on the milestones within each of the broader goals, right?
Some of those, some of the items that are currently listed as a goal may fact as a subso, subservient, but it's.
Well, I'm hoping that we can come to consensus on my suggestion that we end the use of potable water for irrigation systems, I know that's a big political challenge, but I think there needs to be a sunset on using this valuable resource for watering your lawn.
I don't disagree with you.
It's just one action item, I think we need to really take action on.
And that goes within one of those big three, right? That's within water quality, protect water quality.
Or assure clean, actually, we missed, there was another goal in there, wasn't it, a separate goal to assure clean water supply, what was that called?
Yes.
Yeah, I think sustainability, long-term water.
Ensure continuous supply of.
Quality drinking water and adequate water.
Right, and that's, that's where the spring, that's where your regulation would go under
But we need to face up to the DEP limit on how much we can extract every day, because
there.
we're continuing to develop housing and so forth.
Certainly, that would certainly.
Right, so that fits under that goal, yeah, yep.
The goal that you just mentioned could also cut across a bunch of, like several goals, or several milestones, well, there was a goal of reducing consumption by 10%.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Which again, that probably folds under, that, that's a subservient goal.
The issue in this category was identify what, you know, what exactly is trying to be achieved, and then identify what are milestones for his achievements, and so if you have improving water quality and so forth, one of the milestones may be what you're talking
I'm trying to conserve, that's.
Yeah, I think, I think, I, I, I don't think, I don't think this is too far out of the potable realm of possibility, but I think if you were successful in getting all of irrigation off of your town water system, you would reduce, you would reduce your water consumption by.
A lot more than 10%.
Right.
Yeah, and it's a big political challenge, I think it's something we need to do early and tell people it's a three-year sunset, you know, something like that.
So noted, I got it.
An observation and one concern, I'll just say, and this is true in the groups that I was in, the level at which we were setting goals changed dramatically over the course of the morning, so our later goals are far more high-level, and the milestones that are under them are more equivalent to what we were setting as goals in our first session, so I'll be interested to see how that comes out in the draft, my concern with this one in particular, I'm actually really glad to hear that it was, that this pillar was narrowed really to focus in on water supply and, and environmental water quality, because I've always felt this pillar was way too broad, but I, I am concerned that we don't have solid waste represented here, if we don't have solid waste represented anywhere, so.
Okay.
This is all about water, though.
So I don't know if solid waste goes under sustainability, which has been focused more on just energy.
Well, I think, yeah, we were talking about solid waste in sustainability.
But we have some, we have some really big solid waste issues that we need to be dealing with, and it's, I think, an important part of resource management and sustainability moving forward, so I would hate to not have solid waste represented.
One of the, the group, you know, here did discuss, you know, SWAC and the importance of composting, recycling.
Under sustainability.
Under sustainability.
Okay.
So that's a good point, though, thank you.
We'll note that for a trade point, but we'll put some notes together for.
And if you don't have anything new, just use the old stuff, right?
Yeah, everything, well, let's hear from the other groups at the end, I'll kind of summarize, so the next one would be organizational effectiveness, which was, until you had that group, Doug, Heather, and Jack.
No, organizational effectiveness, I don't think that's what we did.
Oh, no.
We did the community involved.
Organizational effectiveness.
I was me and Heather and Doug.
Me, me, Jack, and Peter.
You want to?
Sure, so again, the, the goals that we ended up with are again at, at kind of a range of levels, we condensed a few of the first inherited goals into one high-level goal to improve strategic alignment, I don't have the right wording, to.
Improve alignment of committee.
Improve an alignment of committee activities to the strategic plan, to, and under that, to develop a communication plan to work with our committees over the next few years to ensure that there's really good understanding of select board priorities and how we should be interacting with those advisory committees and, and vice versa, and then the other two goals that we had, one, to conduct a DEI audit and develop a DEI plan with the end goal of, of having that done by FY '27, and then another goal to provide DEIB training for management team and subsequently all employees, with the goal of having the management, or milestone of the management training completed in FY '26 and all staff in FY '27, and as a final follow-up milestone in, in that process, determining a, a schedule for ongoing or recurring training to happen.
Was there any discussion?
Did I miss?
No, I mean, basically, this, this one, you see it next, will be dramatically shorter, we ended up striking several items that, and there were several that were.
We started with 15 goals, so.
Yeah, and I think we're down to three, because many of them were completed, or it was noted that a couple of them were covered. covered in the finance category, so there was redundancy, so we said, look, that's already been covered and discussed in other categories, so.
Is there a goal of, I wonder if you touched on us responding to recommendations from committees and tracking the implementation of their recommendations? Because that's something we've received some.
There was a general goal that was improve alignment of committee's actions with strategic plan.
That's getting them in line, but what about getting us in line when they give us?
I think that could encompass a two-way.
You might want to add that as a milestone or something, some kind of a reporting for select.
Sure, the select.
Track our success at implementing their recommendations, because that's something we get kind of some feedback sometimes that committees recommend stuff, and it doesn't happen, even though we seem to be supportive.
Right.
So I need to, I think we need to do a better job of either saying, yes, we like your idea, and then supporting it, or if we don't like the idea, just tell them.
So I mean, that's interesting, because I actually hear potentially a third, I guess fourth, goal there, which is around improving the select board's effectiveness in actually
Following through.
Following through on not only committee recommendations, but on kind of our stated goals, right? Because, because what I often hear from committees is they feel like they're making recommendations, but they're kind of coming out of the blue, and they don't necessarily align with what we're thinking about strategically, so they kind of understand that they don't get moved forward. So if we improve that alignment, that feels like one step of that, but there's another part of that I feel like I'm hearing, that's, that's we just need to do a better job.
Sometimes they give us their reports and their recommendations, and we nod and say, okay, and then we move on. And so I think we need to do sometimes a better job of making, taking notes of what they're recommending and following up and putting it on our agenda, and either voting yes or no, and if it's no, we got to tell them why.
Good, because I just had the affordable housing committee just sent in a recommendation that they've been working on, I've been working with them and getting it, they just filed it, so I think hopefully this will serve as an example of.
Certainly.
Vote on it soon, and then kind of, I'll speak to that when that comes up, but as a path of, this committee's been working on it, talked with Heather when she was liaison, and then me when I was liaison, we worked on it, tweaked on it, and then I'll go before the board, kind of as a roadmap of implementing or at least discussing, like you mentioned, because sometimes we will go with the recommendation policies.
This is, kind of flows into what we were talking about when we were dealing with the community engagement portion of this priority area. There's a lot of overlap between the two, and this is just as much a community engagement issue as it is an organizational effectiveness issue.
Before, do we want to nail that sentence down, though? Because I think that is important, kind of what you said as a fourth goal.
Are we going to take notes?
Yeah.
Just to follow up, you know, follow up on the recommendations of committees and boards by select board acceptance, and if we either accept or don't accept, I don't want to be too confusing, I think I said it better earlier, and I forgot exactly what I said, but.
I think what you said was fine, just remove that last.
So is it essentially, take action on recommendations received from appointed committee, boards and committees?
Yes.
Yeah, improve follow-through or improve response time.
Yeah, because I don't think it's a communication thing at all, I think it's just actually doing or saying we're not doing this thing.
Yeah, sometimes I think that's where we drop the ball a little bit, because we get a committee report, and they'll say, at the end of it, we hope that you'll do this going forward, and then there's a little disconnect there, because we might not be taking notes.
Move on to the next thing.
Move on to the next thing.
The way I've captured it is clumsy, and it will be improved, but follow up on committee, select board, follow up on the committee and board requests and recommendations. The milestone, for lack of a term, we provide specific feedback and closure.
Right, that sounds good.
Yeah.
And I'm just doing FY twenty seven.
Yeah.
Can you do feedback parentheses or vote? Like, if they literally give us something to vote on, I think that that should be.
Well, I did closure as a general term, because closure could mean a lot of different things.
Right.
It could mean follow-up, it could mean, you know, somebody could propose something and say, well, we want to consider it, and maybe you should put that back up on the council or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, something may not be ready for the prime time.
Right. You may want, yeah, right, you may want to vote.
Longer process.
Yeah, you should exactly vote to it. You don't want to embarrass yourselves.
Okay, community engagement.
We had a high-level discussion about the complexity and interrelatedness of all the topics here, some of it went into organizational effectiveness, and then we quickly moved it out, but the organizational stuff that we did touch on were the practices to simplify, systems and practices to simplify and streamline access to town services and information. Many of these things kind of crossed over into organizational effectiveness, but talking about just community engagement, we kind of went into two branches of the arm, of two branches within that, which is there's a public participation part, and then there's a community engagement and community relations part. The public participation part was, and again, all of the tasks that were in here didn't achieve a why, it was just a nice, it was a milestone or a task. So for instance, reinstitute annual potluck social, yeah, that's nice, but like, what is the goal for doing that? And what, you know, how does it start, you know, tying back up to bigger things? So I think what we were trying to really focus, or what we did focus our discussion on is that we do need, at the next time, to come up with a high-level statement for community engagement of select board and town management members to determine what we want to achieve and why. So we want, an example is increased community engagement, because participatory government is important for the, fill in the blank.
Town meeting form of government.
Town meeting form of government. And in that, we wanted to add in goals of ways to share views, questions, comments, and concerns as a way to build trust, but also to close that communication loop that we just talked about before, which is oftentimes someone sends something, and we, you know, lack of time, lack of protocol, lack of whatever, there's never a follow-up, or when a committee says, hey, we recommend this, and we don't actually follow up, so.
And the why to why we do the community engagement is because the engaged electorate is essential to this form of government.
Absolutely. And then we also talked about the community relations, but also the community, the participant, the public participation aspect, which is, we have an overall goal to reduce the board and committee vacancies, because we want more people to participate. How do we do that? Well, we can do that with our civic academy that's coming up, and then we can also do that by way of becoming more immersed within the community. So we talked about formalizing liaisons to village associations or cultural organizations, increasing our presence in either social media or, you know, some other way.
Oh, research schools.
Yeah, schools.
FCTV.
FCTV, communication protocols to answer, we touched on that. And then another goal is to maintain and increase the number of engagement events. So from what we already do, you know, there were seven of them, and five of them I wrote, which are annual potluck, community forums, town pride day, persons with disabilities day, Juneteenth, on top of everything else. So what did I miss from the people?
I think you covered it, I think you know, a lot of. I think you said, you touched on the website. We did talk about the fact that we need to overhaul the website, we're in a contract that's going to expire at some point, and we need to really do another overhaul.
We got some interesting feedback on our website.
What did you get?
Thanks, I think it's pretty good.
But he thinks it's great, he thinks it's one of the better ones around.
Really?
I have things that are pretty bad, they're way worse.
It's good to hear, it's good to get outside perspectives and hear positive feedback.
Interesting.
Call a note to the votes would have framed this, but we also discussed briefly the, how a lot of our engagement, community engagement is reactionary to a specific event, right?
Yeah.
Ballfields, you know, police facility, rather than proactively engaging and soliciting two-way communications.
I didn't really think about that, that's tough, because that's also just the nature of people, especially in Massachusetts, like, that is just kind of how things go, but whatever ways we can be proactive.
And the police station, I mean, some of it, like, the baseball fields is an example of reactionary, right? I mean, we discovered a crisis, and of course, we're going to have to do community engagement, but the police station, in fairness, I mean, that started with us just initiating community engagement, we didn't, that wasn't reactionary.
That was proactive, yeah, yeah.
And it was very effective.
A very specific.
Project.
Project, yeah.
And we actually sought public engagement, like, our first couple of meetings, honestly, if you guys hadn't had the concerns about the watershed, and we all agreed, we probably would have just voted that site.
Yeah.
And then the people would be saying, what were they thinking? But because of our system and what we did, and we held off, Bob wisely said, let's take this, go to another meeting, and we went to the senior center, and I said, I don't see any activists, nobody's here complaining, they sure came out quickly after that.
It's interesting, I don't think I fully realized that we were getting only the organizational effectiveness half of what's been a combined pillar. There's definitely a lot of overlap, but one thing I'm, that's interesting is that the staff barbecue ended up in community engagement. I don't see that as community engagement, and I know one thing that you're really pushing on, and I wonder if we want to consider as an additional goal, is around really stepping up, not that it hasn't always been part of what the town did, and this is why I question whether it's, needs a strategic plan goal, but is really around employee recognition and satisfaction.
Yeah, so I think that's into the organizational effectiveness retention.
Right, and so that wasn't under, I was in the organizational effectiveness one, but the community, the potluck ended up in the community engagement, not the organizational effectiveness, and so we didn't end up talking about that, but, but I think it should be, that's fine, I just, it was interesting to hear it that way, and I think there is potentially something there around continuing to improve staff morale.
You got your employee of the month, or the employee of the quarter.
Yeah, the new program.
And that's a measurable thing, which you can say, we want to maintain or improve employee morale, whatever it is, so if it's already high, we want to maintain it, and you can measure employee morale with various, you know, surveys. But something I do want to go back to what Doug reminded me of, and I kind of got it lost in organizational effectiveness, but we did spend an amount, a good amount of time talking about access to services to make things easier, so developing systems and practices to simplify and streamline access to town services and information, and then we put in the SMART goals, but we were talking about all municipals, all municipal services should be online, AKA like permitting, stickers, paying bills, and making it easier, right? We talked about functionality of online access to information, so we kind of touched on that. We also talked about hybrid meetings, and the techno, like, starting to get that into the planning process so that we can be more inclusive of whether people are remote or not, but also we talked about access to broadband for FCTV, so that, or to fiber, so that they can have a bigger channel, right?
Well, that could, that's what would facilitate the hybrid meeting.
Yep, and then we talked about the need for a community calendar, and that's kind of bridging the social with the, all the different town activities that we have, and then the civic academy. So I just wanted to make sure we touched on those.
We need to move on, because.
Well, I do, I mean, as close to one as I, as we can get out of here, that's my problem.
It takes thirty minutes to get to Hyannis, Bob.
But I gotta go pick my wife up.
Who knows how long that takes.
We narrowed public safety down to be pretty.
We did a good job of.
Pretty tight, right?
Go ahead.
Somebody be done.
All right, I mean.
We're going to keep you safe.
Do you have the exact language written, or should we have Phil read it?
Construct a police station based on the feasibility study, construct a police station at one hundred Brick Kiln Road based on the feasibility study with milestones to include public outreach and securing funding. Let's see, develop and adopt a long-term police services plan that is a, kind of a continuation of the staffing study that was conducted as, over the past several months, to really develop that into something that is adopted by the select board, and we would then be looking at developing resourcing plans and that sort of thing, so it's not just staff numbers, but talking about prioritizing different services, K-9, marine, traffic enforcement, and also as part of that, again, having community engagement to ensure that our whole community is on board with the direction that we're taking our police station.
Sort of a continuation of the outreach for the police station construction, but now with, looking at the staffing model, and getting the public on board with what the resources that could be required to expand that.
And then the really biggie, well, kind of, that might warrant, and do you want to read the exact language that you have? And on that note, we did decide to.
Fire station.
Yeah, it was, I'll get fire station, just want to say, we collectively felt that striking the goals that are currently there around health and human services, and specifically opioid epidemic services, that that was very appropriate as a strategic plan goal when things were in a crisis mode, and at this point, it's kind of status quo activities, and so we struck those from.
Because we feel like the systems are in place now, that work is done, it's not really a strategic goal any longer, it's just that it's an ongoing.
It's important, it's ongoing.
Right.
Yeah, sorry.
The verbiage on the fire station issue was continue six fire station models while examining feasibility of combined north and west fire stations. So the goals have been altered slightly, and the milestones are consultant should, the recommendation we might be, you're going to need some consultancy for that, update service map, and there may be other updated items for the consultant, but the general ones were update service map, update response map, perform our financial analysis, review and update operational effectiveness of six versus five fire station plus some public engagement once that report is complete. So the idea is that, you know, you're in a process, and you're going to hire some expertise, and there was discussion about whether that should be done internally or externally, and the general thought was having external voice or external services for that makes more sense on a couple of levels, first of all. If you have, if you're making changes to your life safety, the way in which you're providing life safety services, having expertise, in event that you have some kind of, on an event where you're getting sued or whatever, you've got a record that you sought expertise, you hired outside expertise, and so you have some defensibility for that, for that on that end of it. But also sometimes a disinterested voice speaking to the community can carry a little more weight than an interest partner, so there's some benefit.
And if I could clarify, I mean, I was on the board when we changed these languages in the strategic plan, and it was my understanding that we were continuing to look at the combination of the west and north stations while we maintained the six-station model until such time as we decided that it was time to build that new combined station. And I regret that the way the language was written, that wasn't clear, so now, hopefully this language makes it more clear that the combined station is likely the best outcome, but we need the data to show us that the response times, you know, taking into account the Hatchville station, now, if we do a northwest station, where's that four-minute catchment area in all areas of town? Is it the most effective to have that combined station, or are the locations we have more effective? Maybe then we realize that we want to keep that six-station, but based on Mr. Renshaw's analysis by the engineer, how much money it's going to take to get that West Falmouth station to be able to house a fire truck, the expense involved, the fact that it's still a station that only houses two people, might not be the best value for our money, and might not be providing the best service to people in that neighborhood in the end. So I think this big study to figure it out.
Along those lines, the big change in that wording was removing the word commit.
Yes.
And, because that word obviously can carry lots of different, and it might have been written originally as, to continue, but I think from what we could gather, what I could gather and others could gather is, this commit has taken on a little bit of a life of its own, so this allows you, this wording and the way this is worded allows you to kind of push back away from, impart that concept somewhere else, and get back to the original intent, which was to continue the six-model six-station model until you're ready for the five-station model based on the business study and evaluation.
Correct. That sounds good for everybody?
Yeah.
Much clearer direction.
Yeah.
Fine ones, financial and economic stability as well as energy, financial and economic and energy sustainability.
Who'd you put in charge of that? You put Jack on there? This guy spends like money like it's going out of style.
I was the most hawkish, I actually don't think I allocated an additional single dollar.
What?
Next, next meeting is. Next, next meeting is when we add the items.
He's getting all, he turns 23.
Essentially.
Yeah.
Essentially where that group ended, and we don't have much time, I'll try to summarize real quick, was that next time, we need to really address that. Because it's not, it was really, the goals that were there, the actual goals that were there aren't sufficient, but there's a lot of meat on the, on the other list of goals, the ongoing goal. So next time, we're gonna focus on those two areas in terms of creating a couple of strategic goals each. But go ahead.
In addition, that we talked about economic development, or like, the bifurcation of financial stability versus economic development.
Spend all the money.
And financial, financial stability was very simple, just keep our triple-A rating. That was, you know, and how we get there was by the munis program. Right. And managed debt obligations.
But we really need to flesh out those milestones that we need to.
But the decision, the recommendation was to separate out those two.
Right.
Yeah.
And have an eighth, in effect, right? I mean, we're gonna have economic stability or economic prosperity, however you want to phrase that.
Yeah.
Separate, separate area.
The goals are completely different.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested, so we, in our discussions, and I just wanted to clarify whether this is a change in the structure of the plan itself. We, the community engagement and organizational effectiveness were split apart, but then what I'm hearing here is that two were combined. There's the financial, and then also.
No, they are currently combined.
They're arguing for the opposite.
They're currently combined as one priority area, and we're recommending that economic and, and financial are really two distinct operations. Yeah.
Updated October 2024, energy and sustainability is a pillar separate from financial and economic stability.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, no, we're talking about financial and economic.
We haven't talked about energy yet. Financial stability.
Okay, that's what I'm asking about, is if, is if those two somehow got combined.
Our group, our group just talked about those.
We're dividing economic and, and financial. That's what we were talking about.
Okay, sorry, okay. And then energy and sustainability remain separate, but also talked about solid waste maybe coming out under sustainability. Okay.
Focusing more on the measurable, you know, things such as recycling, composting sites, and things like that.
Because we felt that this one was the most dependent on outside actors, like the state and the federal government. So really, we tried to focus on what our goals we could have that we can actually achieve. Because there was one on renewable energy that we felt was, what put way too much onerous on other things happening, like Eversource would have to do a bunch of stuff. And I don't know if you have any notes, but I think we really kind of trimmed a lot out of that, because it's really asking the town to do things that it just simply can't, could not do.
Talked about upgrades to the grid.
Yeah.
And some of that, what's the term, interconnection and the limitations right now because of the aged infrastructure, and that's really not within our, the town's.
We can still send letters and say, come on, fix this.
Um, sorry, you're trying to wrap up?
Yeah, in the two minutes that I've left, I want to communicate here. If you were taking notes in your groups, please email Phil and I your notes, as soon as you can. We are going to get a draft of what we talked about today to you by a week from Monday. To Thanksgiving. So it'll be, it'll be more or less an outline of, you know, what we discussed, and then as far as our agenda for the six, and we'll go through that draft, right? So we'll want to have you look at that before we even say you're ready to discuss it. Secondly, we'll be adding new goals, so we have a new, quickly new, that isn't yet been addressed, and you want to talk about it, if we're not with you. And third, and I think it'll become apparent when we get the draft together, which areas are that we're gonna need to spend more time. I think this economic stability area, we don't, we really don't have anything on yet.
Question?
Go ahead.
Will you just take this and redline it with the changes, or is it gonna be a whole new document?
It'll be, it'll be a whole new document, it'll be, because I think I have.
Yeah, yes, yeah, we said. I'm just curious about all the existing plans. We didn't really go through like we usually do.
You said that last time, yeah.
Yeah, at the end of, at the end of the day, you're gonna get a revised version of that, that we draft for, that you can, that town can get this one.
That really consolidates the goals, Doug. I think that was the purpose of this, of these sessions, is to look at, we had a lot of different goals, and some of them weren't even relevant. This consolidates a lot of those into, you know, a lesser number, which in turn is gonna make it easier for, for the staff, right, to plug in, again, identify those, those day-to-day actionable things that they do.
I'm fine with that, except that I don't want to lose these specific things, like the one about the irrigation. I mean, there are some goals that we talk about in these meetings, and we hope to implement them as time and schedule and budget allows. But I don't want to just have a new document that loses a lot of that stuff.
Do we, do we maybe just sort of take notes and put them as future select board agenda items, if they're really one-off, specific actions that aren't?
Well, let me, I mean, what you're, what you're gonna get for next time is a work in progress.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be the whole picture. You're gonna get what we talked about today. You're not gonna get what we talked about last time.
What's our deliverable, I guess is my question. I mean, do we, do we have a new revised strategic, 2023 to 2027 strategic plan that we, the select board, votes?
2025 to 2030 now, right?
Yep.
No, it's not, that's the point. It's, we're still dealing with the 23 to 20, that's, that was my original question.
Yeah, we're looking to drop this up and then go.
Right, we're not, this is not 25, this is still the 2023 to 2027, I think.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
I don't know. I mean, that's what's always been done, right? I mean, it's always.
No, we've always changed the year, each, each year.
We never have.
Until, except for last year.
Right, which I, I mean, you guys jump in, doesn't seem, to me was a very unfamiliar practice. Doesn't feel like a strategic planning best practice to.
Keep the same years.
Have it be rolling, have it be rolling in that way.
Right.
Doug, to your point, one suggestion I might offer is, and again, my understanding of the strategic plan is this is a strategic plan for the entire town, not a select board annual work plan. And maybe it would be worth, once we adopt the strategic plan, this board coming together, it can be just an internal meeting, to actually kind of say, okay, this year's work plan, right? And let's like, let's start looking at meetings and where we have agenda space to talk about irrigation, to talk about X, Y, and Z, and, and start to ensure that we, that we capture all of those specific thoughts and things that we need to do, understanding that the strategic plan is not necessarily the place to capture the select board's annual work plan.
My preference would be.
Put it on the agenda.
To stay with this and revise it like we have done in the past, and then be looking towards maybe a real new rewrite, you know, whether it's six months out or whatever it was we were talking about before.
But why keep the dates the same? It doesn't make sense to me. We're in 2025 now.
Because the guts of this plan started in 2023. I mean.
But I think it would be too.
We're not rewriting the whole thing.
The guts of this plan started long before 2023. It was always updated every year since as long as I can remember.
I think you're at this weird juncture, I think, and David kind of referenced it at the beginning of the meeting, which is, you've got kind of one foot in this model of the 2022 to 2027 plan. And my observation from the discussions is, and by the fact that a bunch of items were deleted or completed, and then there were some goals that were morphed and so forth. You know, you're just in this kind of weird spot where you're, you're trying to, I think you're really trying to do a whole new plan, or a substantially new plan, but.
We're doing a major modification of this plan, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with adding years, or whatever, whatever you want to do. I think, you know, maybe we call it 25 to 29 or something. I don't know, but that's, that's fine. But what I want you to think about is if you're truly doing a strategic plan for the town, you're not gonna change it every year, right? A strategy should have some legs, right? So that, the tasks change, the objectives change, but the goals should have at least a five-year life, right? So you want to, it's like a master plan for the town. You're not changing the master plan every year. Strategic plan, you know, you update, you tweak it, it should be a very minor type of thing. Look at what we, look at what we did, where, where we, when we adopted this strategic plan, where are we now? What needs to change? You really shouldn't be messing with the strategy.
It sounds to me like you're talking about the town's comprehensive local plan, rather than the select board strategic plan. Because the select board is a more nimble reactionary group. We're not long-range planners like the planning board. We're dealing with the here and now, and we only go on five years out for a reason. And we adjust each year as those needs arise and fall off. Like COVID came and went, now it's off the board.
We're saying the same, though.
Okay.
Okay. But this year, I learned very quickly after the last session, is that you all wanted to talk about these strategies, and the, they weren't working for you, a lot of them.
Well, it wasn't clear in guidance for the town manager to be effective, because it was so vague and open-ended as to what is we really after.
The goals were not objective and measurable.
Yeah, and that's definitely.
Otherwise, how do you measure progress?
Yeah.
So I get back to my previous, maybe really doing strategic planning, is that a strategy, like the one about, the one that you thought up about, flew on my brain, but beaches, right? World-class, you, you, your strategy is to have world-class beach, beach facilities for your residents and visitors. That's a strategy that.
That won't go away.
That will never go away, right?
Right.
But under that, might change, but I would, I would suggest that the major milestone under that, don't change unless you don't meet one, right? And if you don't meet one, then you have to open one up. So, yeah, you, you, you do your strategic plan, five years to the horizon, you look at it every year, but you don't rewrite it every year, you don't.
So then what happens at the end of five years?
You reiterate.
You rewrite.
The five-year plan.
You have a more robust rewrite.
Yeah.
That's, that's the model.
That's what you've seen.
Yeah, yeah.
It just feels like.
Stakeholder engagement, like.
It feels like what's happening now is, well, it's definitely, you know, I've been here nine years. This is a, a much more extensive, more robust rewrite than we've done in the last nine years. So whether this is the time for a reset, or a reset is done later, this is gonna be a pretty substantial change, I think.
I agree. One of the things that, sorry, I think it's a select board member, but, you know, I think the idea of working in some discrete, meaning, you know, discrete metrics into plan would be very hard for me to develop, so it's, you know, whatever it is, if you've got 2,200, you know, let's say one of the, one of the items is, is, you know, the water quality that we talked about, and part of that is, you know, cleaning 20% of the stormwater basins every year. You know, that's measurable, right? You can ask, okay, we've, we've got a thousand stormwater basins, did we clean 200 this year, yes or no? That's a measurable outcome. So I think, you know, part of what has to happen, and it's really hard, because, you know, it's, some of this stuff's not easy to define, and is to define what those metrics might be, and then also define what resources are required to be put in place to accomplish the metric. Because that's the other, I mean, the, the plan is the select board's plan, and your role is the chief policy setting body. The execution of it is on the town administrative staff, but you have to give them the resources.
And don't create too much of a wish list, because if we ask them to do 200 storm drains, and put up a new flagpole, and do this, and do that, and the other thing, you know, we just pile it on.
Somebody at the table, one of the select board members at the table says, well, I want 50% of the storm drains cleaned every year, and if that is up there, they say, well, you want me to clean it?
Plenty expensive to worry.
So let's, let's thread the needle. Let's use this activity to close out the current one, and just fix it for this year, but use it as practice for how we're going to get at the new one. And so we're gonna close this one out. We know the end date's 2027. If we happen to come out, let's just say in six months, with a new one, that's gonna be five years, based on the work we're doing, I think that's cool. And we can, you know, the, the dates can adjust, but I think the activity is to not lose anything that we've been tracking, but to start building towards something that is actually more high-level and better. And the iteration is, yes, in nine years, we haven't, we've always done is some wordsmithing. This one's a little bit more intense, but it's actually practice for us to get at the, the bigger things. And practice in hopes that, I hope that we use the terms, you know, tying back and rubber meets the road, that this actually has an impact on 2026 actions, you know, where, where we can, because it's never too late to start. But really, to have a focus on, if we can't affect the operational budget, because that's 90 or 95% set, can't really be changed by strategy, maybe we can have an impact on the 2027 build of the capital planning budget for some of the items that we discussed.
We can impact our own actions.
We can impact our own actions, too.
So, so, you know, good conversation about the, the need for resources, but you also need consistency. And that's what a strategic plan does for you.
Yep.
Gives you a framework for that five-year period, so that if there's a changeover in the board, right, you're not, you're not changing the plan. The plan stays the same. The people who are newly elected to board have an opportunity to influence that, but it gives the town manager some consistent.
Yeah.
Set of strategies to work, to work towards. And so, that's why you don't want to be messing with it too much every year.
Yeah, we don't want to have to do everything by executive order.
And on that note, motion to adjourn.